This conference will now be recorded.
Cal, do you want to move this over there?
What's that?
That's my.
My.
Oh, sure.
We like the hero, but we're a little brittle. Thank you.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Don't worry about it. You're good. You're good. You should bet that one.
Yeah, right here. Okay, ready for roll call?
Yeah, roll call, please.
Okay, so she started the recording?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
I'm Mr. Leach here.
Here.
Mr. Kish.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Ms. Holloway?
Here.
And Ms. LaTanne?
Here.
May I have a U for?
You stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the next item is the approval of the agenda. Anything on that?
I have a question. I don't see in here discussion on the Stellamere Drive North, that circle.
Roundabout, yeah.
The roundabout. Have we determined?
I thought it was up for discussion this month.
Well, the repairs.
No, no.
No.
No, no. I'm talking about who owns it.
Who owns it?
Do we own it or does?
Is it a parking lot of the community?
They own it. Stellamere. You have the agreement to maintain it.
So they could make a parking lot out of it? That is.
So that's the question I wanted to discuss.
Yeah, I think that's a legal question.
Exactly.
So we should add it.
That's what I would like to do, thank you.
Uh, let's add it to.
Old business?
Uh, eleven E.
Yep, attorneys.
North.
Yes.
Your motion?
So moved.
Put a motion out that we add Stellamere's roundabout as item E under attorney report?
So moved.
All in favor?
Need a second.
You would give your motion in a second?
Okay.
Any other items? Okay. So move on to audience comments on the agenda.
Please identify yourself, sir.
Yes, sir.
I think there's a button on the bottom. Yeah, it's a little switch on the bottom. We should return to.
There, it's on now to see the light.
Is it working?
Am I on now?
I think so. I see a green light.
Is this part on?
Yes, okay. Testing.
Yeah.
My name is John Kellmeyer. I live at three fourteen Newport Drive apartment sixteen oh seven. I've been a snowbird for sixteen years and now I'm a full-time resident. And I'd like to address the board about this.
There you go.
Do I have to start it over?
No.
No.
I'd like to address the board about the possibility of turning it over to the county. I don't think there's anyone on the board who believes the county would take more better care of our money than they do. I don't think there's anybody here that. If there are somebody here who thinks the disbanding to C I D is a good idea, they should not be on the board. They should get up and leave. The money that we generate from a water plant right now stays here at the port. If it goes to the county, it'll disappear. We will not have the money. When our sewer system decides it wants to die, we'll be liable for probably twenty thousand dollars apiece on special assistance. Where if we keep our own money here, watch it ourselves like we've been doing for twenty years. I think that's the best way to go.
I think on the agenda is that meeting that was took place with the commissioner for this district about doing this. And I don't know the result yet till we discuss it.
I have one question. Did one of you initiate this?
I did.
But I think you should resign.
Well, Jim, sir, nice try. Nice try. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Any other comments?
I do.
Catherine?
Catherine Kellmeyer, three fourteen Newport Drive number sixteen oh eleven. Just want to thank whoever put up the stop sign on going out of Newport. And I think the one-way sign there also is an added bonus to make it visible as to what's going to happen.
I want to know how we had an accident there after the signs were up.
Yeah. Well, they weren't. They really didn't have anything to do with it.
I know, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, crazy. It just happened to be right there.
Right there, yeah. I heard an SUV was turning and a motorcycle.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? No, okay, we'll move on then. Approval of the minutes.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, so do I. You start.
On page thirty, page line thirty. Supervisor Kish asked him the D E P on the property and so on further. It was stated that there are only ten acres available for wetlands. I don't believe that's correct. There's only ten acres designated.
Right.
Not available for wetland.
Yeah.
So change of available to designated.
And number sixty-nine. CID.
Oh, that second line.
For parking. Will the CID allow it to be striped for parking?
That's what we're going to talk about.
Yeah, will, it should say, will the CID allow it to be striped for parking?
Okay, so take out does, put in will. The C D D.
CID.
Or allow. Yeah. Allow to be striped for parking.
Yeah.
That was it. Thank you.
One of mine. See. Oh, this, um. Number eighty-eight. Case Drive sign is up. What sign on Case Drive?
Oh, those arrows, I believe. Oh, no.
Is that the new kind of doing goal that you're talking about?
That's what I'm asking.
Oh, no.
Right above it is Case Drive monument painting.
This must be, yeah, the monument proposal.
All right, but. Where is it about that agreement?
I think.
Don't we need the agreement approved and signed before?
Correct. I bet you're talking about the Case Drive sign is repaired. Is that possibly what we were talking about?
I don't know. It's not clear.
Case Drive sign.
Yeah.
And it was repaired and painted. And then we had a cost of painting has increased.
But that was for the monument.
That's the monument. That's correct.
So that part.
What's the difference between a sign and a monument?
Mine, I think, I think the walls, isn't it? Yeah, the wall, that wall, the concrete wall.
But that is the monument.
That's correct. I think it's meant the same as, the sign has been repaired.
What sign?
What sign?
The, remember the hole of the Case Drive sign, the sign that's in the middle?
Oh, all right.
Remember, and your friend repaired it.
Well, your friend did.
But that's not part of, and the cost he donated this time.
Right.
That's correct. I think that's what it meant.
So we have to buy the two thousand five hundred here.
That has to do with the.
The cost.
That's a proposal.
We can just strike the first sentence.
That's fine.
Drive sign is up, just right.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, and then, let's see.
Line eighty.
Eighty, line eighty?
Eighty, eighty.
Eighty on page twelve.
What are we talking about? It says E R C and it says E R U's and we have U E R C. This was O N M's.
Yeah.
Yes.
Aren't they called E R U's?
They are, he is changing for O N, O N M to E R U's. And the utilities will remain as an E R C.
And the other thing in here was saying U E R C's. So we got U E R C, E R C U. So those are going to be our terminologies?
Not yet.
That says the rules changed. Right, it says U E R C. U E R C, so I think. So we're not going to confuse them. I think we need to be consistent.
No, you're right. We need to be consistent. What are you going to call them? And again, Russ's wire report only addressed the O N M.
Right. Yeah.
So that's right.
That's why, yeah, they put the U in front of it to track a void.
Yeah, but they put the U in the back. My line eighty.
Yeah. I might have taken, what I'm reading in, I've got for me, it doesn't say U E R U.
It does, it says E R U. That's what mine says.
Yeah.
Where's the U E R U?
That's the difference. For this, utility E R C's are put the U in front.
Yeah.
The E R U's are equivalent residential units. I started to connect, oh, because, no, and the utility charges are based upon connection. That's right. We put on presidential.
So to differentiate, and for Russ's reports, equivalent residential units.
Right.
Okay.
That's the version, that's why it's called E R U's.
I'm just thinking it's going to still be confusing if we had it in one term, the U is in the front, one term the U is in the back. For the general population, can we clear that up?
I don't see that in the minutes. On line eighty, it says.
Just E R U.
It just says E R U.
Which is units.
No, no, I think what Mr. Kish is saying is that when the general public sees the acronyms. Okay, but that's part of the rule change. These minutes are. I think what Mr. Kish is saying that just globally, the public may get confused when they see two different acronyms. One will be U E R C and then will be E R U.
All right.
But I don't. That's, that's, that's a discussion during the rules and the adoption. I agree. Yeah. Let's stick with the minutes.
But then it means this is official. If it's in the minutes, then it's going to be called an E R U.
No, no. Not until the board adopts the methodology proposed by Russ Wire.
After the.
That's what his call.
This is just a discussion. Kish.
Okay.
There's U E R C's, utility.
I know.
I know. But this is for equivalent residential units. It has nothing to do with utility.
It doesn't do connection. No, it's one of the things saying.
Yeah, I know, I understand what he's saying.
The minutes are a reflection of the discussion and what went on at that meeting.
Presentation.
And we did refer to it as E R U. If you want the minutes changed.
It's weird, it says new E R C methodology and then you mentioned E R U's. So, and then we got, it's.
Well, that's what it is now. It's an E R C. That's what it is now. The rules will change it.
Yeah.
It is. Discussion at a meeting doesn't change anything. It just is reflected that this was the discussion. Right, there was no vote. Moving on. Okay, so go change Johnny.
Right.
Right.
Any other changes? For corrections.
On one oh three. The engineer has the template for the easement encroachment agreement, which could be used for docks and sidewalk encroachment. But we weren't given that template, right? Was it?
Uh, he might have just made the statement.
Okay.
I don't know if we've been given it or.
No, 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 we're, I think that's some information. There was a couple of things that got rejected by the clerk when it went in for recording. So Tony's working on getting that updated.
We already made it as per. Yes, it was just a second block, that's all.
Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else?
Motion to accept the minutes as adjusted.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. With changes?
Yes.
Yeah.
The motion was by Ms. Holloway.
Second by Al Kalam.
And all in favor. No objection.
Okay, the next thing is the landscape maintenance. But before Rod, he gives his report, I've been asked by several people, and I want to be sure I'm thinking right. The history of the median. Like, we maintain it, I know that, but we don't own it, right? Doesn't the state own that?
Oh, there on forty-one.
Yeah, forty-one.
Uh, yes, they own it. You have an agreement with the state to maintain the median.
And maintain means to like mow it and take care of the plants?
Yes.
Okay.
Where's that agreement?
It's with the state.
If you want a copy, you will send your copy.
Yeah, it's a state agreement.
Just ask for it.
I just.
Maintain every agreement, every resolution, all of the minutes. You have a total packet, anything at a meeting is in a, what we call the record of proceedings.
Yeah, and then I think November twenty-second, you sent the board a lot of copies of the contracts, the main contracts we have, like.
The ones that were requested, yes.
Okay.
Well, no, I just was wondering if there's any way we can get rid of that, maintenance of that. We want to.
If, if the count, the state made a sizable investment in landscaping it with the understanding that the board, that CID would maintain it.
I thought Lady put Tony out that landscaping, the state.
CID, or the state paid for the landscaping, I don't know.
The original. Well, I think recently we paid for that accident, the damage done by that.
We're talking about.
Somebody said a woman donated. There was a plaque apparently.
Florida State, she worked with Florida State.
Okay, ah, there you go. That's all, okay. I bet you. Yeah, we all did. She donated it, okay.
Okay, so the state put it in, we maintain it.
That's right.
Right.
I don't know what the termination laws are to not do it.
The only advantage, it represents our community as you drive in, that we have control of what, what people are seeing.
Yeah, somebody came up with the argument it costs twenty-four thousand a year.
No, then I heard it costs seven thousand a month.
That was, that came up.
So seven thousand a month for everything.
Yeah, I know. They're saying just the median.
Field that's through all the communities on the CID property, it's the dry retention basin at the, at the plant. I, I don't know.
But it costs everything. It's the cost to maintain the CID in the, in the SODA's agreement is twenty-three hundred dollars a month. Is the cost for, just for.
For that median.
For the median forty-one. So it's about twenty-eight grand a year to maintain. I'm just, I'm just saying that so that it's.
Yeah, I guess it's not seven thousand.
That was the argument, yeah. It's twenty-eight thousand to maintain it for the year.
Okay. All right, and we'll be going over the contracts on the new budgets, so. Keep that in mind. Okay, I'm sorry, I want to give you a presentation.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Did my drive around with Michelle? The timer, apparently the meeting last time I did go over there, the timer, the power, get power to the timer on Case Drive. So that is working pretty good. I am going to percolate a little sooner than normal because of the frost that we had, we're affected by it. The grass is actually, you can see it in the grass, you can see it in the plants. So I'm going to push it a little sooner than later to kind of get everything to come back. The west side of forty-one, I was asked if the chemical or something that got on the scrubs, it's actually frost.
Yeah.
No kidding.
The last time we had this, probably it was thirteen to fourteen years ago that we had a frost.
It's thirteen years ago. Oh, my first year here.
Yeah, so it's been, so we do occasionally happen, every ten years or so it does happen.
Now, the ones that were trimmed, they're still alive?
Everything is alive. What's happened is they just, where the ice sat for so long on the plant.
That part.
It's going to defuilate, I mean, the, the, I'm sorry, start off our leaves.
Yeah.
I'm going to see how far down it actually killed portion of the plant. It could be three inches, it could be two inches. But I have to remove that part and cut it and kind of, it will all come back. It's happened before.
And I've seen it.
Yeah, and I've seen it where, you know, they completely get defuiled, it leaves no leaves on them and they come back perfectly fine. There was a concern in front of me with this accident that happened. I wasn't aware, I just found out about this accident, motorcycle or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was mentioned to me by a resident that I do come in, before driving, stop in the middle there, that it is a blind spot area to the right.
Depending on the height of the car, I would say.
Depending on the height of the car. I will mention this, if it is an issue for, now is the time to cut it back from what happens, it kind of benefits the plant so I can drop it down to the level that we want to maintain it just to prevent any future issues or accidents. You know, we can trim that stuff lower.
Because that's actually the second one there.
So if it is, I just need to know exactly how much of a blind area, I mean, I'm going to call trucks so I never see.
If you just go in there and stop at the stop sign.
Yeah.
In a car, regular, just a car, and you look up, you do have to look, you know, you do have to pay attention to it. You know, there's, the bushes kind of, there are spots where it blocks. And the other problem is, quite frankly, people are coming in real fast.
Plus headlights.
So you only have like a few seconds, right?
Yeah.
Anything that we could do?
Yeah, I hate to speak out of turn, but would it be hoop us and maybe it should have been done before someplace on either side before you get to either Case Drive or the other to say, have a sign put up saying through traffic, keep left because there.
It's a state road, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the premise.
It's a state road.
D O T.
Yeah. Because I know Russ was looking to see if we could get the speed limit reduced.
Yeah, that would be the best bet, but I mean, like, like last Saturday and Sunday during the seafood festival. Oh, my God, it was unbelievable.
It's always that way.
Yeah, it is.
Because, because as soon as, you know, there's so few places to pass on forty-one, when you got a place to pass, they literally fly by you on the right-hand side. And that, you know, there, I think there, you could reduce it some, but I think that's just pilot error. Somebody didn't see them coming and, you know, and it's not because it was blocked, it's not blocked. I've turned there all the time, but I go to the club.
Yeah.
It's, but somebody just missed it.
I think having Robert lower the.
Yeah, it hurt to lower. This happened to be a black Yamaha motorcycle, big one, with a man and his wife on it. And the car was coming across, nobody really saw it, but his right front clipped the guy, T-boned the bike. And oddly, the bike flipped towards him, so he took it out like this, and that's how low the car's. But it was just a little, like a little Buick, you know, a little, an SUV type car.
It was a K O two.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
It was something, it wasn't really big.
Yeah.
What I would suggest is there are line of sight requirements that are in traffic manual.
Yeah.
Manual, neutral traffic control devices in the county, entire county, and that also have regulations about line of sight, tighter vegetation. And so I don't know the last time that anyone checked the line of sight at an intersection.
Yeah, that's wrong.
I think it's important because again, there's distance issues and there's height issues with that line of sight. And if it's not compliant with the line of sight requirements, it needs to be.
That's probably a good place to.
Would that be a letter to them to ask them to come out and check it?
Well, I guess the question is, the vegetation is on forty-one, State Road, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I've got, I'm suggesting a letter to D O T. Have the, or I guess the question is, we have the obligation to maintain, so we maintain something and, yeah. We may have.
We probably should know for our own benefit.
Pardon?
We probably should know for our own.
What's the agreement says, if the agreement, I don't know what the agreement says, we gentify, F D O T, if there's any issues for landscaping matters, but I think it's important to check the line of sight.
Could we, could we have Robert sort of C C and all that whenever.
Sure.
The county comes down to check it, Robert can be there and they'll say, this needs to be trimmed or that or whatever. Such different approaches. One would be to contact the state about doing a side, line of sight type of study there, just make sure that things are correct. Or we go, we go on some of the guidelines and so forth and pull that information out too and feed it to Robert so that we can make that determination ourselves.
Know how F D O T operates, maybe faster. Yeah, I, what, it sounds like everybody would like to see it lowered. Go ahead and lower it.
Yeah.
They'll go up and let me have David get with the. Put it, establish the line of sight established. And Robert, if it's three feet, Robert will maintain them at three feet. If it's two feet or whatever.
I'd rather keep it in close than go to the D O T. But I just want to know what the league would have to do.
I just, go ahead and do it.
How high is it now?
I think they're probably maybe thirty-six inches.
Yeah.
But it's way.
Plus you got the angle of the road.
What do you think?
I could bring them down to maybe twenty inches.
Oh, yeah?
Maybe inches.
Yeah.
Down to this, you know, and it's just a matter of what. Now is the time to do it. The reason I'm bringing it up because it did, that was the worst sign that got affected. And I was, I don't see a blind spot, but I'm on a bigger truck. If they were having issues, like, you know, somebody's not paying attention, it's, it could happen as far as fast if people come through that curve.
You just go around and cut so low, you're going to damage your.
Right.
Take them as low as you can. And keeping the integrity of the plant. And then, it's ageable, did with the county and did a height established and Robert will maintain it at that. Can you have the meeting retrieved, that agreement from the state and the district? Chris is listening on the phone and he will, the rest of the board want a copy of the agreement?
Yes, may as well.
Okay. So Chris, the agreement between the Florida Department of Transportation and the CID is probably ten years old, maybe longer than that, I don't know. I think longer than that because I've been that way, because I've been there, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's pretty much in my side. I mean, there really, no need for proposals or nothing right now.
I'd like to revisit the other proposal from the last meeting, you know, the drought resistant plants at the front of Newport.
Oh, yeah.
So because the, it was so expensive to do the irrigation, I think we should move forward and get those.
Oh, yeah, exactly. You're not going to worry about the irrigation.
Right.
If it is quite a bit there to do as far as, just to get water to those areas.
Yeah. We didn't approve that or?
No, we didn't. We tabled it because we were looking into the irrigation costs first, but then it just seemed so monumental. You know, and you and I drove around and looked at some color and get, you know, the drought resistant that provides color.
I did show her, we did walk at that area this last meeting, I showed her the area, you know, like Chris was talking about between real landscape. I didn't break that, but I can resend it out to you guys. I don't.
It was for three thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Fifty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, we have a copy. Can we go ahead and approve, having the motion to approve the proposal for the drought resistant plants?
What was, what was the irrigation cost?
What was the, what was the irrigation cost?
The irrigation, you said with the running, if you went under, you, we never heard a total, it was just, everybody said it was a lot.
Yeah, it's kind of, just the boring itself would be at least over six thousand dollars.
Okay, how much?
Thank you.
Six thousand, yes, six thousand.
Just the boring, that's not even.
Yeah.
Which, can you, you know, boring?
I can, I can accompany, but it's usually, um, really, I get advice.
I said, Michelle's center getting him out here.
Russ seconded.
The highest cost is getting him here.
Russ did, I said, so, yeah, I, I'll resend it out just.
Alright, so the motion is to.
To do the drought resistant.
Drought resistant plants, and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye, aye. That included the irrigation, right?
Well, that's no, that's why we're talking about. Yeah, no irrigation, so we know the cost and we're done with it, and it looks nice.
Okay, a lot of that, like I said, don't worry about the landscaping on, that was affected, I was asked, you know. It's all depends on the wind, which direction, what gets plenty more, you know, getting that shield and perspective and that. The new, I will mention this, there was some, uh, new planting that I put in that were affected. But I did put on my notes that I will take care of this.
Yeah, that's our, we're seeing that.
It's not fair for you guys, I can, and it's not fair for me, that I will take care of it for you guys.
Appreciate that.
On the nature, so it's something unpredictable.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Did you want, did you guys talk about the, okay, very good, okay.
Yeah, I see.
Alright, I was gonna use the buffer if you want to do the right now.
But anyways, uh, that's, that's pretty much it, that'd be crazy. Hopefully it gets over here pretty soon and everything starts bouncing back, so I will look at that and, um, that's the only issue that I know, if there's any other issues, I'd take it back to you, just let me know, we'll take care of it. It's kind of like we look around for the, the fourteen foot carriage required, which actually we have to be, you know, the requirements, you guys have always come back. I just brought this up because it was mentioned to me, so, that's a long, alright?
Okay, thank you. Next, we have utility operations.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Don't have much exciting stuff for you this, uh, what? Sorry. Wastewater received four point five million gallons, the water distributed is four point eight. Irrigation right now is up quite a bit, seven point nine million, for lots dry, a lot of people are here, so everybody's irrigating on. The panels, those prices have changed, I don't know what they are, but I won't research that or reach out to them until we decide that. We need to do that for the lift stations, the fire pump station, that's still in the works. We met all of our compliance for the wastewater, all of our compliance for the water, the reuse station is working. The performance metrics are what we just spoke about. The, uh, reeds were done this month, we had thirteen reeds, our chlorine usage was nine hundred gallons, uh, water usage complaints, we had three this month. Two weren't too bad. Usually we go out with the new meters, show them the data and, and that takes care of it, so it's working out really well. The blower at the wastewater plant, it should be back any day. We inspected all the lift stations, no odor complaints, generators fine, the security cameras, um, A V P's been back there working again this week. They're chugging on, but they're kind of slow, they work on it a few days and then leave, then come back in a few days. But I am hoping that they will, uh, will finish soon. The storm drains that were marked out for us to clean, those have all been cleaned. The R P Cs, we've replaced all the handles that were bad and all the recertifications have been done, so we're, we're in on that. Really wraps it up for me, like I said, no, no major breakdowns.
It's, the fiber optic, fiber optic people, did, they started, are, are they coming or what?
No, here's what happened with that, so originally A D P came out and wanted to do fiber optic, but, but there was an issue from the old plant transferring the data. So then we spoke about doing that Wi-Fi, agreed not to do that. So I went back and looked at the cameras that are currently there, coax, so I got back with A D P. And they actually have a, a converter that they can convert the high definition cameras to coax and use all the existing wiring. So it turned out to be simple.
No loss of, um, data, not data, um, they're not fuzzy or anything, I mean, it, they're good.
Justice, good, alright, good.
We can use, plus we don't have to run power, so we can use the existing power, the existing coax, made it much easier.
Good.
Out of the thirteen reeds, everybody happy?
Everybody's happy, yeah.
How'd you do that?
Well, there's still some manual ones out there, the bigger ones that we got in December that we just haven't had a chance to get in yet, but, um, I actually agree with you, Mr. E is on beat like. Like, I don't know what, but he's on me to get those done.
Flypaper, flypaper.
The flypaper, so I will, I will get those done, absolutely.
Thank you.
I've been getting asked, how about the little rusty handles, off and on handles, so I have replaced, I have replaced. Not all of them, but everyone that was bad has been replaced, so any person here should be able to go out and shut their water off in fact.
Okay, okay. Is the other, the back blower, the one closest to the unit?
Yes.
Okay.
One handle had pretty grass.
Gone.
Oh, I can put a back on there. Just a nice, you know, a version of the magic of it, absolutely.
Do you prefer to have them on three pages or would you go to have them on one?
No, really. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We see that engineer is next.
Alright, I'm gonna jump down, I didn't see before, eventually, in case you step out. The water tank inspection, we've got another one scheduled for next week, the second of the two.
Yes, absolutely, that, and that is my fault, I didn't realize, I thought they were doing the outside inspection only, because when I spoke to them. We talked about the water tank and the irrigation, so they're coming to inspect, we're gonna drain the one irrigation tank. But they're only inspecting one of the irrigation tanks, the other one is gonna be still without inspection.
Right.
So, um.
Is that bad?
Wow.
Does he not, we're doing the end?
So they are the professional in aqua store, so I, I don't know, do you, you have them come and inspect your aqua stores tanks, and then do you have another company come and inspect the other thing?
Thing, I, I, so refreshing my memory, what's the other tank, is it?
Steel, and I think it might have been maybe like a steel, but I can't find any name on it.
I could do a cursory type inspection on it real quick, probably.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it, it looks good, but again, I don't know engineer or tank inspector, right?
Uh, let me take a look at it.
Okay.
Yeah. Good. Okay, I already got a C I P report, uh, as Mitch mentioned, the fire irrigation pump station. We're still waiting on a couple proposals to come back as far as the electrical, getting electrical in here involved, as far as the replacement of the equipment out there. So I'm just waiting on him to get back to me, plus I need to find a diver who's ready to go down there, do some inspections. That could be a challenge. And then on the horizontal well, uh, there was some discussion, it was a part of the C I P, but there was been discussion about looking at. Potentially using the horizontal well system up on that parcel thirteen. I did get some pricing from the GeoTech, uh, I, and, and his costs, and, and I'll have to add something onto it to the system and so forth. But we're probably looking at about thirty-five thousand dollars for you to go out there, drill some holes, uh, do some, uh, drawn out tests, different things like that, per report. To see if it is even feasible at this point. Again, uh, what I'll do is I can finalize proposals, that's something you'd still wanna pursue. And we don't need to vote on anything, but if it, it says this is, if you want us to pursue it, I'll go out and get a proposal.
You had an interest in that, right?
I think so, but I mean, it's up to the board.
By now, until we get any ideas about anybody who's interested in buying thirteen, I mean, I wanna take it out of commission and spend thirty-five thousand dollars for us to look at a horizontal well, and then we turn around and sell it to somebody. You know, I, I.
Yeah.
Something maybe we put on the back burner for later.
Okay.
If we don't get proposals that are, you know, that go along with the board ads for thirteen, for parcel thirteen, but I think we ought to hold off on it.
Okay. A little while. Gives you an idea of the rate, we're talking about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Dave, I think what my mind, what it's gonna come down to is basically what he said. If originally, and Ron said it last month too, he was the one that said it originally when they had the meeting. At the time, about five years ago, it was gonna cost about two hundred fifty thousand dollars to put that system in completely. And the line to go out to the wellheads that needs replacement is over a million dollars. So, in a nutshell, very vaguely speaking. You're gonna find out today what he's gonna list the land for, and it's not a lot. That being the case, if we could save a million dollars. Now we're making, we're spending even less, we're not making as much, get what I'm saying? So unless he comes in with a viable offer or enough money. That would be the better way to go, but I agree that I wouldn't spend the thirty-five thousand yet.
We're just hanging on to this, if you guys are ready or if you're ready, Art. Okay, good. Uh, new home construction, uh, it's ongoing out there, some places are better than others, uh, we're getting cleaned up, it's construction progress now, and, and they're actually finishing up some of the work.
You, you looked at what Chris, Chris's, uh, report, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we still got some of the damaged sidewalk panels, but in some cases they're not ready to do their sidewalk driveway work.
On the, the driveway, well, panels, I know there's some broken in front of an empty lot across the street from me.
I talked to Joey today.
But now that, uh, the house is being constructed next to me, I noticed they're parking on that lot, they're going over the sidewalk, so I see future damage.
Right, and there already is, I talked to Joey about this morning, about the two panels that are real close to him that he probably damaged, he said he's gonna take care of those, so, yeah.
But what do we do about the parking like that, can't stop?
It would take the property owner to polish it.
But some, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they don't live out here, so.
Right, right. But, uh, we probably should put them on notice that they need to be responsible for that damage.
Yeah.
I'll check into that one. There was some questions asked about the decorative pavers and so forth in the right of way. And we did get out here and do some checking of what we do have currently. I kind of broke that into areas, the K two, case two area, there's like a total of ninety-six properties over there. There's twenty-three that are currently vacant or underneath construction, the bulk of them are probably construction that's vacant. Yeah. Of those, we've got forty-eight of the existing homes and so forth that have pavers or decorative driveways. And of that number, there are seven that also do have sidewalks that are decorative pavers and so forth. So we do have it existing out there already, and then of course, if you go over to case two, there's no sidewalks over there. But we've got twenty, of the thirty-four properties, case one, we've got twenty-one with, uh, pavers or decorative driveways. Salmar, so, that's all concrete up there, no, no concrete pavers or anything. At Salmar's of South, there's a couple that do have decorative pavers for the driveways, but none of them with sidewalks.
Yeah, we made sure of that.
Yeah.
That's in our bylaw.
So, uh, you know, we've got, that's all paper sidewalks and driveways, a hundred percent there, so that, you know, it's already been. Started as far as all the pavers and sidewalks and so forth. Somewhere, though, you know, probably nothing you can do today about that, but something that's, uh, we may wanna talk about is, uh, we don't really have any kind of. Rules or procedures related to land development, subdivisions, maintenance of sidewalks and so forth, and that's something down the line, we probably need to develop some policy for. And, uh, what, what I wanna do is try to get to some of the other districts and find out what they're using for guidelines. For instance, with the pavers and the sidewalks, again, we would put the onus probably on the property owners to maintain them in a safe condition. Where the district happened to do it, the district would still need to be responsible for certain sidewalks along the east side of case, or, uh, case drive, because there's no property owners on a long, big portion of that.
So, just what about the, the indemnification of the C I D liability, the liability issue that's for those people that have. Decorative pavers instead, where they took out the sidewalks and put decorative pavers, we need to have some sort of indemnification, do we not?
Could be helpful, but the fact that to the extent there are pavers installed. Leverage to get that demarcation. Difficult. On a ongoing basis, I would suggest that. Notify the parties, we gotta start underdeveloping parcels, those owners that are engaging construction, they want to install a driveway during improvements in the district's driveway. You need to, you know, just a little advance, need a license agreement, like a.
When you gotta speak up or, or, or get the mic open by you?
Uh, either get a right of way agreement, a district or a license agreement, the county issues right of way permits, for example. And the part of that would be that they properly are responsible for all repairs. Uh, and would never find old district car most pretty damages or claims resulting from, they'll describe where you're located. But I think that's how to go forward, is to go after, now ask them to sign something.
Yeah.
Most people would say, you know.
The problem is, most of the homes or the lots have been built out now.
Only question I have is, didn't we get, uh, something from, I read somewhere that, that the county requires does not allow the pavers?
That's correct, the county does not allow, does not special permission pavers within the right of way. But they do not issue any kind of right of way permits here in the district.
But I think what Sam was saying is that the county requires.
Right.
Our approval, then that's, that's the vote.
They'll be looking for sewer and water.
Right. So wouldn't the county override all this?
I would think the building permit, uh.
The park.
Yeah, well, that's the question, is the county building permit department requiring letters of consent and objection, owners of the right of way for installation of paper. And if not, I think we need to send a letter to the county accounting department. Saying, hey, in the future, whenever you have applications for the, it's C I D, C I D road, please notify us, nobody's writing permits for any driveways built, we issue our letter.
Yes, we had no way of knowing.
Try it out.
We had no way of knowing the sidewalk was gonna go.
Correct, I think at least put them, Jamie French is in charge of all that now, and we need, Jonathan Walsh is the building official, and he's a really good building contractor now. So David, if you wanna draft it and send it around to Cal and I.
Okay.
And it might be, uh, I think it'd be appropriate for the signature to be there, sure, we draft it. And Cal and Chairman know those issues arisen, we want to make sure.
Yeah, I think we need to find out.
The county's become more sensitive to those issues in the recent past, uh, because the county was issuing permits for enclosures and easements. Until these holders said, hey, county, you approve the fence running down into my lake, or hey, county, you approve of the. Generac standby generator, my training easement, so the county is now requiring a set. Showing that surface, so.
The, if consent's going to be given, it has to be measured against some sort of standard or rule. The board can either reference and say that we follow the county, uh, right of way rules. Or we included in the rules now, but if that's an issue, we should, we need something that says what the board wants.
I think the board could just adopt the policy, I don't know if they need to adopt it.
Okay.
I think the policy could be, I think the board articulated today, that if someone comes in the door, that the. Board would need to see the application, feel the board understand or fully what the processes are, and then after that could be a staff option, I would suggest.
Let me, let me ask you this, if a resident brought this up, it's a legitimate argument. If you go, for instance, down Sunset Case, as I did this morning. There, I think, seven or eight of these incidents where the driveways are paved, however. It seemed like, I was driving, it seems like most of them came to the sidewalk, the sidewalk's there, then they came over.
Yes.
Yeah, a couple of the new ones, like one sixty-one, I think it is, came over the sidewalk, got rid of it, and it comes out, looks fine, looks nice. Nice job, expensive job, looks better than the sidewalk, I'm not saying anything bad, but. Previous boards over the past, as far as back as I've heard, ten years, either didn't even know that other owners did it, or didn't care. So that kind of sets a precedent, so then if, if moving forward, if we were to do this. If someone's gonna build a million dollar house, even though they're almost all built out, but you get what I'm saying, you're gonna say, well, how come they could do it and I can't? Know what I mean? So I mean, the previous boards were oblivious to it, or allowed it, or whatever it was, but they're there. And some have the sidewalk going across them, some don't. So I, I don't know, I wanna ask the question though, because this has been coming up a lot, and we need to address it, and I don't know the answer, I don't think any of us do. It seems like the county isn't talking to us at all. And, and another case in point is these folks that were legitimately really upset about the flooding situation and the swales, legitimately upset. And even Joe Levy said, it's because of the elevation of the new houses they get, and it's like another eight point nine feet, and the water's coming off the front and the back. And it's accelerating the velocity of the water, and it's creating these flooding in some situations. But it lands on us because this is a district, but if, I don't know, the answer would be one of you two. It seems like the county says, okay, go ahead, but they don't think about the impact on us, is that the way it is?
We're pretty much.
Yeah, you know, that's gotta change.
Yeah, yeah. Again, the county has become more aware of the impacts on the governmental entities, easements. By virtue of couple, like one, in July March, they became aware of the fact, the county was issuing permits to property owners to run fences into the district lake. Which then also blocked the district's lake maintenance easement. Because the plans that they required at the time, they require showing easements and didn't indicate cooling the lake. The county addressed that afterwards, saying on the generators and side yards and otherwise, they did not realize there was an issue for pool, spa equipment, and heater and all that kind of stuff. Until Fiddler's Creek had a number of issues with generators in side yard drainage and your utilities. And so then the county changed its requirements for building permits for that. A lot of building permits get stopped and the applicant is told, go get a letter of consent, a letter of objection, or something else from the interested easement holder. So I think it's just a matter of awareness on the part of the county. Because if a survey shows an easement, the county typically now will say, you need consent to the easement holder for most other improvements. So I think it's important to tell the mechanics to payers and district, or advice, and why, put that on the list also.
But I mean, I think, obviously, the horse is out of the barn. I think it's all built out. I don't think we're gonna run into this again, except here's what I heard, here's what we heard as a board. We gotta talk to South Florida Water Management District to increase the portal going into the canal. And that can cost a lot of money. Who's that gonna cost? Us. And the county hasn't told us or thought about impacts on us legitimately. At the meeting where those poor folks came up to us that are here for the winter, nice folks, didn't want to be standing there, I get it. And they're just asking for a little help. All we can say is, we don't know, we look stupid, we're not, we didn't know anything about it. And I think we've got to change that disconnect. I think we need to create a pattern where the county talks to us. Another one's that lady that came legitimately on fire. We sent her a letter about fifteen feet to put a swale through her, and she's building a brand new house, she's out of mind. I get it, she's exactly like her, I'd be mad. Okay, but it's not us. And I'm not passing the buck, it's not, but it's landing flat in our lap. And we're talking about, I think, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Where's the county? They need to love us. We, it's not fair to us. So we need to talk with them.
Again, we're.
Okay.
That's true.
That's.
Let's get back to the pavers.
All right.
The, so basically, all we want to do is make sure the homeowner takes care of it. And we're not legally liable.
And we're not legally liable.
Back to the end.
We're trying to minimize liability.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all I want to do.
Yeah.
I have no problem.
But you can't say we're built out. Someone like me can decide to put pavers in.
Yeah, well, you're right. That's true.
Right. So how do we cover that?
But again, David and I, who brought a crap, or everything, crap a lot, but you go to the county building official, the county community development director, who's saying that if anybody comes in for a building permit.
No, 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 the ones that are already done. I mean, we don't want to make them pull them out, so we just want to make sure that they maintain them. Is there any kind of rule that we can?
We can adopt the rule requiring maintenance, and then we can outline criteria for the maintenance. Just require their maintenance, require that if we send them a letter, they need to maintain it. If they don't maintain it, we can fix it. And then, then we can specially assess them in the next upcoming budget. I mean, we, we've had that issue arise in a different context in some other communities with tree roots encroaching into right away, which caused problems with sidewalks and or driveways. We're doing that at Fiddler's Creek, we have a rule that says, if you got a tree on your property, you got to be responsible for it. If it's roots affect the district improvement, you need to be one, remediate, I'm just giving you notice. If you don't, then we can either sue you for it or impose a special assessment on the additional costs.
Well, that's what we need to do, because they are, you know, people do have trees close to the sidewalks, we need.
Oh, oh, we just love.
Yeah.
We just went through.
So we need, so we need that too. So that should all be in the same thing, and then.
We just. What I could do for the next board meeting is show you the example of what we did in Fiddler's Creek. And you can look at that and say, well, we want that, or if this is something to do, we can start the rule amendment process for that.
Yeah.
Or I'm not sure if we can put it in per rule amendment if we have stolen out, it may not be.
We may want to wait on that.
Yeah.
We may want to wait on that so we get a good comprehensive rule for all types of land development.
I think, I think what the board is saying is this particular issue is more pressing than the others.
I think it is. Yeah, I think, I think it is too. As I said, it's a liability. You know, we need to limit our liability as much as we can.
Yeah, we can't.
But look, it looks great.
The sidewalk's trying to group with the tar. I just want to make sure.
That stuff looks good. Now there's a lot of exposure, so.
Yeah.
Maybe Tony can come up with an agreement that we could require anyone with, that's altered the right of way, which includes the sidewalk. It's the apron end of the right of way, that if they don't sign it, they gotta return it to what it was.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, the difficulty is with.
Existing.
Existing. We, the board, this district has allowed that to occur over time.
Exactly.
And there's, there's an argument for a stop hole or a waiver, and if you make them turn it over, I mean, that's.
After ten years.
I'm not the policy maker, but I think the idea of having a crowded room bus people standing here.
We have to say.
It is, it is. If we can make them as possible for maintaining them, like Tony was saying, maintain them, if they don't maintain them.
Then we can go.
Then we can go and do a special assessment on that property.
Right.
But we can have a carrot. But unfortunately, with the C D, CID, we don't have a stick.
No, right.
We do not have a stick. That, that's our problem. We have the ability to have the carrot, but we don't have any stick.
Oh, in the future, you made it. And again, and it may also be a letter going out to people, just saying, hey, folks, you all have these pavers in the district's right of way. Your responsibility is maintaining them, the district is not anything happy, we're gonna look to you, please put them on notice.
Yeah.
So to do that, we need to list, we can generate that from what we bring up to the board. There won't be a, upside the head, it will be a reminder.
Right.
We have the next board meeting, we have one at.
That sounds good. You guys have Tripping Falls, obviously, but you also eighty eight and five, right?
That's eighty eight.
Our American.
The Health Act.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
It's the tripping, I worry.
Just, we're all on the same page. We're gonna send a letter to all of the people with altered sidewalk apron and just say that, realize that this is, you did this without C D D or CID approval.
Well, it's not only the new people, I have one of my block ten years ago, they did it.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't say.
Identify everybody. Everybody.
All of them.
Everybody with a letter saying that, you know, it's their responsibility if something happens.
Yeah.
And then Tony's gonna draw a, a rule or something, an agreement.
He's gonna bring a sense.
The right of way permit for future, but I think as far as example of rule, I'll just bring what we're doing in Fiddler's Creek.
Right.
Yeah. We're drafting another whole.
Yeah.
You all can see, again, that's focused on tree roots.
Yeah.
You can get the sense.
Yeah.
That's what's causing the problem.
And I think it should only be where our sidewalks were. There was no sidewalk there to begin with.
Correct.
Doesn't matter, it's not a walkway we maintain.
But she's right. Houses that have been there twenty years might like the way it looks, because it does look better.
Yeah.
And they might want to do it too. It's a good point. So then what happens if all of them do it? It'll look better, but it increases our liability.
You know, I'm very example, my house was built back when I was growing up. I hadn't asked for a driveway. So about ten, about ten years ago, I decided, let's put paper in.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. So we just need to cover these things.
Yeah.
And one thing we may want to include though is any pavers within the right of way. If district maintenance requires them to be removed, that we would not be responsible for replacing the pavers.
Yeah, that's why can we draft one.
But yeah, we can draft that up.
Yeah.
Right, say if, if it, if you need to get to a sewer line or electric line or whatever.
That'll be the letter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like someone like me, there's no sidewalk, so would I be liable if you had to dig under my driveway?
Kier County, for instance, if they have to get underneath your driveway to do utility work within the right of way, they do not, they're not responsible for replacing the pavers. They'll, they'll replace with concrete, but you're on your own as far as pavers.
Okay.
That's our policy.
Unless they have plans that they made a mistake and put papers on. We have a driver that happened to. Oh, my God.
Okay.
Then the county wanted to take the papers up, or you know, you permit?
Right now, who is this?
E.
All right.
E.
A E is where we're.
A E.
Oh, no, no. The sidewalk.
Sidewalk clues. I think you got a copy of the proposal for those. There were, in your package, there was just one, I believe, but I think it was subsequent.
Is that the Oakland Southern?
Well, now the other, that was one of the three bids we received. Anyway, I got extra here, let me pass these around, maybe.
But I have one question on this proposal that was in the packet. It makes reference to three different options we have.
Right. Yeah, let, let me explain. He called them options, but those are the three locations, basically.
Oh, so that's.
So it's confusing.
So add them together?
Add them together.
Add them together.
We've got the prices, and it was difficult to really go.
Yeah.
Yeah. We gotta call up three prices, and it was difficult to find people to price it out. And it ran from twenty three, five fifty to the thirty four, four twenty five. And, and that's gonna be for a total of, let me keep it straight, a, a total of three locations. So it's, it's, it's pretty pricey.
Did they give us?
Yes, it is.
What kind of water it's gonna move? How much water is gonna be able to go through there?
It's gonna be an area that's, it's on the sketch.
No, but I mean, they should give you like a flow rate or something.
Well, we, 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 we prepared a drawing for them as far as what they need to achieve. And what we've got underneath the sidewalk is an area that's gonna be about, oh, so it's gonna be about four inches high by about, about two and a half feet wide. So it's considerably larger than the three pipes we got underneath most of the driveways at this point, so it's gonna do quite a bit of water. And it's not gonna be subject to clogging either.
And it'll handle a twenty five year storm, a fifty year storm.
Yeah, it's gonna handle, you know, the twenty five year storm event.
But the question I have is, until you do the swales behind it.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any difference.
It's just gonna send it back there.
It's going to, it, once the swale gets backed up with water, it's done. You can have all the, you can have a pipe this big, it don't make any difference, it's not going anywhere till the swale goes down. And that's the whole point. Unless you do the swales, to me, this is just a, a, a little bit of icing. It certainly doesn't take, doesn't bake the cake, doesn't gives us, you know, so I think it's, it's part of the whole deal.
It is part of the whole deal. And thi- this would be the first start of that whole deal. I did ask for, I did ask a surveyor to give me some pricing for going ahead and surveying the swales that go from the roadway back to this, the major swell in the houses.
Well.
So we're gonna, I'll present that to you in the next board meeting, what that's gonna run as far as with survey and engineering and so forth. And if you, if you want to pursue that, then we can go ahead and get some plans drawn up, get some pricing to get those swales cleaned up, at least getting off the road to the rear yard swales.
Do not the rear swales need to be looked at also? Because there are people that are, the water is coming from their lot and going, of course, lowest place. And it's ending up on someone else's lot because that's the lowest place in the whole length of swale on the main, in the main swell. So, I mean, it's, to me, it's a comprehensive thing, you're gonna have to look at it all.
You have one other issue. All these lots were vacant.
Right.
I would see water sitting on the vacant lots. Now it's not gonna sit there.
And elevated.
That's even more.
That's right.
And the swales themselves, because of the way the drainage easements got rode up. The effective area of the theoretical swales, we're not yet having at this point, we're getting maybe seventy percent of it, or maybe even less. So that's causing some of the problems. Long, long term wise, besides being creative as far as how we may be able to do some of the water detention and storage and so forth. You know, another solution may be looking to acquire some property of some areas where we can expand our existing lakes and do some interconnects between the rear yard swales and the lakes to try to store that water, get it off the back of the rear, rear yard lots at this point.
My concern though is with all this construction going on, we might end up with a nightmare this summer.
Oh, without a doubt.
And I'd like to somehow be proactive.
Dave, I agree a hundred percent, Dave, let me just ask you a real elementary question. Those folks that came here that opened this up, that was really legitimate complaint, and the water's a big mess. I'm gonna ask you a simple, simple question. Joe Levy said, it's as easy as putting a bigger portal to dump water into the canal to alleviate that flooding. Makes sense. I understand the way they were designed wasn't for elevated houses, I understand all that. And I understand the water's supposed to settle first and then go out a smaller, that drain pipe, a smaller portal. Those days are gone. So if I were them, I'd like an answer. I agree with them. I don't know them. But my question really is. How, how hard is it to get South Florida Water Management down here? Because they came for us before, I mean, they'll come, and, and this is a highly sensitive area for them. They own the whole shoreline, they own a lot of this. How hard would it be to tell them, look, we've got a problem? Come down and look at it and work with us. Because, I mean, on the top of it, it seems like, let's get a bachelor in there, throw a pipe in, and it's over. I know it's not that easy. But I, by the same token, I don't think telling them, well, you know, South Florida Water Management won't allow it, it's gonna cost a lot of money. That's, those aren't good answers. So I was saying that I, I, I think there's gonna be more of this, and I think we need to be proactive. And I think, I don't know who they are, I don't even know where the house is, but they have legitimately, and I think we need to get on that. You know, I do, because there's gonna be others.
Right.
How do we do it?
The, that property between one sixty two, one sixty three.
There's another one.
Sunset K.
Sunset.
To the back. And because of the new home elevations and whatnot, the one guy's an engineer. He designed that culvert that they want to put in there between one sixty two and one sixty three, which isn't working as designed now. So he's, if he pays for that, he's paying, he's incurring all the costs. Works.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna, it's gonna get, this is not a, a percolation zone that he's affecting. He's getting it to the percolation zone. He's stopping from building up in the driveways and in the, at the lower end of the circle. So I don't agree with his not doing that, because putting that through, allowing the water to get back where it's supposed to get, will allow a drain at the end down there, which I measured it, it's six inches from the bottom of the thing to the spill. It'll work better that way than the way it's designed now, because now it's all trees, rubble, whatever. It's not a smooth drill.
Well, part of it is that it hasn't been maintained the way it is now.
But if it is a ten inch pipe, like they've got where your house is.
Yeah, but how do you know it won't work if it was cleaned up?
Well, the, the. Yeah, but you're, you're talking an expense we don't have to incur. Well, these people are gonna pay for it, it's engineered by the guy next door, they're both okay with it, and it's gonna flow water to the, to the percolation zone. So where's the problem?
This, the, the swales from the roadway back to the rear yard swales is meant to convey, but also store water. Because there is a gradient from the road to that rear yard lot, so there is some storage capabilities that are there. Soon as we put that pipe in, we lose that storage capabilities. Part of the problem, of course, and we've already discussed it, is these swales over the thirty years have received very little maintenance.
If any.
If any. And it needs to be addressed. We know that they're probably not the storage that was really intended when it was originally permitted, that's available back there because of the way the drainage easements were portrayed on the plaque and the engineering plans at the time. So there is a need to try to pick up some more storage.
How you can pick up storage when, how high is the road where it starts versus the six inch pipe at the bottom? So you're, you have, you're gonna have in one street, at the end of each street, you're talking about storage of minimal amount. In, in that swale, most of the storage is behind. It's gotta get there so it can percolate. All those have to be level, but they're for your storage.
But all it takes is chipping away a little bit and eliminating that storage a little bit here, a little bit there, and then you do, then your problem gets worse and worse and worse.
Well, where else are you eliminating? I'm talking about one spot.
And.
Other area.
In a year from now, somebody's gonna come in and ask for the same convenience.
Other areas.
We want to get rid of the swale between our house, so let's put a pipe in.
Yeah. No, there, there are no swales between the houses.
Yes, there is.
Oh, yeah, there is.
Yes, there is.
Every, every house that's.
Every house.
Has any storage, storage water.
No, the, the, there, there's some designated drainage easements from the roadway to the rear yards, rear yard swales.
Yeah, there's two on the side and one at the end.
Yeah. So there's a total of, in the case, there's a total of twelve. Two of them have already been culverted way before my time, probably.
Look at the new house.
Yeah.
The way there, there is a swale.
It's between every new.
Storage.
Yeah.
Well, it is storage.
No, it's not.
It's back storage.
It's not part of the original plan.
It's not part of the original plan, but it is storage because. It's not part of the original plan, but it is storage because it does the same thing that the original plan did.
Yeah, there's minimal storage. There really wasn't a tendency to have, create a whole bunch of storage in those side yard swales.
So Dave, help me with this. That being the case, and the most recent ones not being designed to do that, the hell with it. Let's have them come and let's do the same thing for them. This, I'm not putting you on the spot, but we can't keep sitting on this damn thing. In sixty days, we're getting ranked. And I'd like to help these folks. And it's going to happen again. She's right. So look, if it's okay with South Florida Water Management for brand new houses, there it is. All we're looking for is parity. And let's fix it. You know, I mean.
What I suggest is that we go ahead and set up a meeting with South Florida.
Yeah.
We, they may come here, their place first, up the four fires. They may send a team out to take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Right.
And then from there, we can get their feedback, find out what they're going to expect as far as modification of the system that we've got.
Absolutely.
And it would require us to acquire, be more creative how we do our water storage. Or maybe need for rain gardens and so forth alongside the road where we do more storage. We may need to look at maybe acquiring some additional properties where they're available to expand lakes and storage.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's almost like.
There are properties to acquire.
Well, we do have to find from a private party.
Yeah.
There are some vacant lots adjacent to some of your lakes right now.
Yeah.
Uh.
They're going for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars off the water.
Maybe what it costs to solve the problem.
They are there.
And then dig it up. So you're talking million dollar project, a couple million dollars?
The price of the land and probably double that and then you might have a lake built. Dave, and the wild part, wild part is I don't know about Track F and G, if there's any potential that we might be able to do something there as far as a wetland discharge or something for water storage. That's just a wild part. Just popped in my brain this morning.
But the thing is, if we've got the people to understand this.
Bring them here.
Southwest Florida.
And get them here. Let the residents talk to them too. That's their job. They'll come. They're not against us. They'll come.
I think we should do that and maybe table this denial.
Yeah.
To tell them they can't proceed.
Right.
But don't flat right deny it.
No, let's have them come out here.
South Florida.
I'll get something going with South Florida. Yeah.
And.
But Ray, as far as having them come here, whatever works.
Right, that's right.
You've got to go there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, that's fine. It may be, you know, similar to me. We're going to be talking about a little bit later with the county. But, you know, we may need to meet with them up there. They're probably sending people down here to take a look see what exactly.
Yeah, they got to see it. So they're coming anyway.
Right.
You know, what's the difference?
And not only that, what you're talking about there between one sixty-two and three, maybe illegal. We don't know.
Right.
You know, the guy can decide it, but it doesn't mean it's legal for this area. Because again, this is a ecologically sensitive area.
Right now, it doesn't match up with what was going ahead.
Yeah. They can tell us. They could say, "Oh, you can't do that," or "No, you could do that." That's fine. But let somebody that actually has control over this tell them.
We'll go ahead and get something going with South Florida here. Now, as far as the bids that we did receive on the plumes, everything's pricey right now. So I don't know if we want to pursue with that at this point.
I think we, you know, again, this is just the icing on the cake.
Right.
So I think we wait until we have a major plan of what we need to do. And then we could include that at that point. It's going to be expensive, people. It's just, it is.
I think it's going to be, it's going to be ugly out there during, during the construction.
Absolutely.
These swales.
I think it's going to be a lot.
I think a lot of people think that the water shouldn't sit in those swales at the back. And guess what?
It's meant to.
That's what it's supposed to do. You can't stop that. But they think they can. They can. All right, here.
Are we going to have those swales cleaned out for summer, especially with the new construction?
No, it's not, it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen.
Why?
It's going to take us a month at least to get South Florida moving. It's going to take, we need to modify permits and do different things like that. That's going to be a sixty to ninety day process. Plus, you're going to have the survey back there, develop some plans, know where we're going, get bids. You know, it's not something we can turn on a dime.
This is a fifteen minute job.
No, no, no. The other thing I'm doing as far as drainage right now, I did ask the surveyor to go out there, give me a proposal to do the survey along Loopport Drive, the case, and along Morning Star. As far as the open drainage there, see what, yeah, get some, take a look at what the, what the geography is. There's some areas, again, that the swales have filled up in there and we need to open those swales up too. So that's another drainage project we need to be looking at also.
But it's our responsibility, those swales.
Those are our responsibilities.
I'm not sure how much you can accomplish even meeting with the water management district without data. You should have those swales surveyed and know where your problems are. That's first thing the water management district is going to say.
Nothing to worry about.
Yes, so we can tell them this is what we have. Right now, we're not sure.
I'm going to ask for those surveys to be done in those areas too and get a proposal.
Do you, I said surveys are already in place?
How can you do surveys in those areas? You have to do surveys, you'd have to survey the whole swale system.
Yeah, we will. It's not going to be cheap.
Is there a survey yet? No. Those are old, right? Those are old.
So we should have them.
No. No, you don't have the existing conditions back there right now. We know what they were supposed to be.
Not existing conditions, but the existing swales. So now, the only thing that would change the condition is they filled in.
Right.
So cleaning them doesn't affect the existing swales.
But if they fill them, they're not there. You've got to do a survey to make sure.
You've got to play that, how far you got to dig this one down, that one down, you know, that kind of stuff.
That may be helpful with talking to South Florida too is, hey, we've got two foot, six inches or twelve inches of material in there that wasn't intended to be there. Plus, the other thing is how much actual square do we, square area do we actually have back there versus what theoretically we should have had? So I'll go ahead and get something going there. We may be fortunate that may be able to do a lot of it using a travel survey rather than on the ground type survey with people going behind all the houses.
I think we should move forward with that.
Okay. You've got an upper limit on the cost.
No, I knew you'd get your proposal.
How about a real bid rather than an upper limit?
Well, I want to get your real cost.
Yeah, we always tend to hit that upper limit. I'd rather see this. We're going to, you're going to be surprised.
But I was saying up to a certain.
We're a month away if we get a price back.
Just remember this. It is going to be expensive.
Yes. Yes, it's not going to be a cheap solution.
No, this is not. This is our, this is our CIP month, right?
But I think it's very important.
So we're swimming in money.
But let's start swimming in.
We need to swim some of it out of here.
All right, on the good side, it was mentioned before about the stop sign. I did get it solved. It was forty-one and two four drive, so that's done. We kind of talked about all the drainage updates and so forth. And the last item G, I did get a template for a updated engineering contract. I think give a copy to Gail and to Tony to start taking a look at. It's one that we're using at a different, at another district. It's got all the language. It's part of the Florida statutes and so forth. But if Tony thinks it looks good, we'll go ahead and get that file out by the next quarter. Any other questions, issues?
Dave, so I've got one. People are asking me about it, three in particular, one in special. I'm not putting you on the spot. You're our representative and I don't know the answer, so I got to ask you. On the fire hydrant pumps and the generator over here at the wheel. Last year, the board went, Mitch found a used board for the generator up in Fernandy Beach where it was. That's on. And I believe his assessment, we hire experts. He's one of them. You're one of them. He's one of them. And he's one of them. We're at your mercy. None of us are engineers. So we go by your input, not just yours everybody. And, and so the consensus is that that needs to be replaced. And it's out to bids. And the average bid so far that we've heard is around a quarter of a million dollars. And in the CIP, it's item number one because of the volatility if there's a fire or a big lot of fires and with the new projects coming in. Having said that, the question that was posed to me that I can't answer and I'd like you to, is there are companies, there are people, where you just put a brand new, up to date board on the generator or on less money than replacing that whole thing. So whose idea is it to spend or suggest a quarter of a million dollars instead of just replacing the board, considering that the pumps and the generator probably have zero miles on them or very little? And there's not really much to go wrong with them at the cost of the board.
There's, what, definitely two issues out there. One, CMTC, Motor Control Center.
The MCC is the problem, you know, number one in my book. That's the control panel that runs the three pumps. Generator is a backup if the power goes out. But I think your question is the generator itself, is there companies that can refurbish or put a new control system for the generator in? And I'm sure they're probably in.
Is the money, is the two hundred fifty thousand gestimate or estimate or bid, is it just for the generator or with the pumps and the generator?
I think that was the gestimate was just for the generator because I had priced out the panel. And we never went to the, to the point of having drawings and submittals or anything done. But I think the panel was like ninety-three grand. And that was the enclosure to run the pumps, right, B F Bs.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds spot right. It's probably close to, it's probably over a hundred now.
Yeah.
Things are crazy. Everything's crazy right now. But then there's two, two major components, the MCC and Motor Control Center and the generator. Some secondary thing is the piping and the valving and so forth out there, but it's pretty much reached its useful life. The generator itself, I dare say, is probably thirty years old, maybe twenty-five.
So the generator's old. It makes power right now and those hard up and run.
But hasn't been run much.
I mean, it runs over many and it's running once a while.
But I mean, it's not like it's been run for days.
No, if it were a car, it would have ten thousand miles.
Exactly.
So, but it's obsolete. It's going to be obsolete at this point. That it's got, parts are harder to find, scavenge parts. So it's like an old car.
The reason I'm bringing it up, and one of the residents is here and he'd like to speak about it. But the reason I'm bringing it up, I've been thinking about this for a whole year and.
The reason.
I'm kind of, I'm pretty insulted, to be honest. But I'm going to just tell you this, and we all should, we really should. But I'm just going to tell you this. We hire experts. You guys are the experts. We trust what you tell us. We make the decisions. We represent the people that live here. And we do it to the best of our ability for two hundred bucks a month. Having said that, we have to assume that you guys are doing everything you possibly can to conserve our pumps because right here is seven million dollar worth of stuff we don't have the money for. Okay? We don't. And we kind of spread it out and it's okay. It doesn't all need to be fixed right now. Okay? But there are some things that have been deferred for six or seven years. So my question is, not picking on you, I don't know who made the decision. There's two hundred fifty grand or ninety-three grand or maybe less to get a proper fix. And if, if we spread that thought process through this whole operation, maybe it'll save us a lot of money. And we have no way to make money. We have to save money or we have to tax ourselves, one or the other. Randy, want to talk about it?
Dave, my name is Randy.
Come up to the mic.
Yeah. Can you speak? Back and speak.
We need it for the, we need it for the record.
My name is Randy Retch. I'm tasked by our board to comment on what, I'm not sure what is to be replaced and what should be replaced and at what cost. But the hydrant water slash irrigation water emergency system has to consist of many parts. An engine generator, emergency engine generator, master switch. And then three, three similar sized, I don't know if it's a voice bell, pumps. And their sequencing. Somebody give me their voice bell?
I think there's seventy.
Seventy voice bells?
Seventy-five voice bells.
Yeah. Seventy-five voice. Is this cost two hundred fifty thousand dollars for all of this equipment replaced? Or is that two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the generator?
For a generator, absolutely.
Probably the generator, yeah.
What size generator is that?
I don't know off the top of my head, right?
You say we maintain it periodically. We start, start, we let it run at no load?
Uh, no, we put it under load.
And where do you get the load from?
We turn the power off to the, to the station. We let it transfer over and we run the pumps. In doing so, I manually run the pumps as well.
Okay. If there's no requirement for water, how much load do you really put it on? Here's where I'm going with this. In order to qualify, even though it might be a thirty year old machine, generally speaking, emergency generators are timed out by their, how long you run, not by age, how many actual operating hours. It would seem to me that you would want to do a in-depth test, full load test, bring in a, it's just a low bank instrumentation companies come down and tie it in, do load assumption, if it's full load, you might have it full load for so many hours. And you qualify the machine and its auxiliary equipment. Just because it's thirty years old doesn't necessarily mean that that generator should be replaced. And that would be also true of your motors, your pumps and your motors, your drainage pumps from the, from your, from your lake. There's tests that can be run on the motors. There's tests that can be run on the pumps. Do you have, that city, that system, do you have the ability to cycle water directly from the drain and then put it back into the lake if you have to put it out to the system?
I have, I need to transfer it to the plant now.
That would be, that would be some way that you could qualify. Pumps, again, motors, even though they're in an extreme environment out there, they're totally closed, motorization, placed a long time, particularly with low run times. They want to be tested. They want to be factored in. Put full, full volume load on those, on those pumps and motors, then evaluate them before you just, I would say, let's replace them because they're ready. And if you have a problem with your sequencing system, I assume that you're measuring, you're looking at the flow and you're looking at pressure and your sequencing these machines. Do they self-start only or are they B F Bs?
I don't know, right.
So they, they sequence depending on demand. And, and there's, there's a stated problem with those controls.
I think we would call it, we spoke about you going out, but you'll see when we go out, the MCC is, it's over the last thirty years, it's been worked on again and again and again. It is nowhere near its original. By, or where it started by.
So we'll work on because of malfunction failure. We'll work on because of changing how you want to sequence your, how the system stops.
Both malfunction and as the system was updated.
Oh, yeah. Right. Well, that could be, that could be in such, such a manner it could be.
But back to the pumps, all of your pumps have been tested under load. They have all been taken out, gone through, repaired. There is no issue with the pumps. The pumps are in excellent condition.
So it would seem to me that the biggest problem, what we're hearing is your biggest problem after you would qualify, fully qualify, your emergency generator transfer system. Your biggest problem is your pump sequencing.
That's what I think the board would have written.
And that's why I listened to what you got to talk about.
Randy, excuse me one minute. Randy's background is electrical engineer in the New York City area. And he had a huge business up there. He was asking me about it, I didn't have the answers. So we're not putting you on the spot. We're just trying to save money. It's not you, we're just trying to save money.
I'm glad to answer.
Yeah, and he's got a knowledge of.
And I appreciate you. We've been a company that did this type of work for commercial and industrial treatment. Well, there's a, so there, there is a, an advocate here to not necessarily spend 250,000 dollars on just a engine generator. Uh, and that's an appropriate price for, I appreciate it's probably a 350 or 400 K every year.
I thought it was 250, but I didn't want to speak.
That would seem to be a little bit short of capacity for your pump size. I'd be glad to take a look at it. Again, I, I'm not sure what the board is trying to accomplish here, but I think you're turning the page and maybe there is a way of not necessarily replacing all of that out there. Uh, just do your, do your due diligence and your testing, your evaluation of, of systems by system. And then, and then repair, replace, that wouldn't really necessarily.
Just to say, come in southeast, there comes in here once a year, puts all your generators through a loading test. So, um, it makes power under a load test.
Well, that's the important thing. Starting, it's not like a small residential unit, we run it once a week for 30 minutes or five minutes. No load, that's worthless, you are ahead of the mission. And there's also, there's also qualifications or ongoing programs for pumps, like routine analysis, continuous pressurization analysis for pumps, motors, as well as dialectic tests for, for engine generator windings as well as pump windings. Those are the types of testing that can be performed to ensure that this system, you rely on what it's really do. My understanding is the capacity of that will really come into play with, let's say, a large brush line, we would need a lot of height, a lot of places here. And who, other than that, do you sit here right?
Yes, back up. Maybe, uh, Randy and Mitch, David, you did together report back that the altar, this is an option, but right now it's not on the agenda.
I understand.
Yeah, okay. It was on the agenda because we're doing engineering and it was, and the reason I brought it up is I think it's time, we have to get away from plug and play. And we have to figure out a way for, and it starts with you guys, to save us money. Because just today and at every meetings, that's gonna be expensive, that's gonna be expensive. Money is going out, we can't make it come in. The only income we're gonna get is these new houses. That's it. And if the hotel builds some towers or something, that's the only way we get income and it's not making money.
We have income from the houses whether they're there or not.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not like a profit, it's operating.
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So we have to watch it.
This was draft to give us some, in fact, I think you're the one who wanted it. With some idea of what we have out there.
Right.
We might need.
That's right.
To come up with.
But it's the first priority in the C I P.
Every item here will be revisited.
Absolutely, that's why.
We plan on spending the money, right? Because prices change, everything changes.
But a resident asked financially free.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get together with Rich and Randy.
Yeah, appreciate his help. Thank you, Randy. Okay, so where are we now?
District manager.
Okay, uh, you've got a copy of the financial report. The collections are coming in a little slow, but you're still we haven't received the payment for this month of January. So the January payment, you're 79%. Uh, but that happens a lot, usually the hotel pays on the last day.
Do you have some extra copies of the report?
Yeah, it was sent to me.
So, yeah, I think I have it, but I don't remember.
Okay, we never print them off, we just email.
Yeah, you sent them out.
Pass it down, I've already.
I'm looking, I'll guess. Uh, you know, your general fund has got a fund balance of, uh, 974, 768. And, uh, your water and utility fund, you're about 500,000. But you do have plenty of money, most of that has to get you through the fiscal year, but you've got healthy fund balances. So you're in pretty good shape. You know, there's a couple overruns, such as miscellaneous services, that was through the historical uh, analysis by Ron, that wasn't in the original budget. Uh, we've been using the, uh, the attorney and the engineer, uh, a lot. Uh, you're not over budget, but for this point in time, you're over budget. Uh, let's see, uh, iron and bronze, that was a lot of work that you approved outside of the budget for solo landscaping.
What's miscellaneous assessment collection?
That's what the county charged.
They collected for us at the law.
Tomorrow, oh, that's because it just happened or something?
Yeah, it's, uh, if, that, that's what the county charges you and they pay, they charge you at one time. So that's 5,000, uh, 376 is the total that you'll be paid or charged this year. And you budgeted 7,000, so, uh, there's not a problem there. Uh, other than that, let's see, uh, all of your overruns are R and M. We're still, we can't find a better rate on your investments than what you're currently getting. Everyone else is offering, and this is a negotiated rate, uh, that we have with Valley. But everyone else is, we're getting, uh, 0.01. Uh, one of the banks we talked to about switching several of our communities over to, they said, well, we can, we might be able to get approval on 0.03.
How much money is it?
Uh, it's just over a million dollars. 1.7 is what you've got right now on your fluctuation. You collect all your money at the beginning of fiscal year, November, December, January.
Now, that money, that money is held just how?
It's in a bank.
I know, but is it CDs or what is?
Money market.
It's money market, but we're getting the same off of your checking as we are in the money market.
Yeah.
Have you looked at Lake Michigan credit union?
They have to be a qualified public depository.
Yeah.
I don't know what they are.
Lots of credit unions are, but well, there's one in, they're getting a lot of write-up and there's one in Naples I just found out. And they're supposed to be really good paybacks, yeah.
Yeah, but if they're.
If they're not a call.
Right, right.
I don't know, you can't use them. And you like to have the flexibility in your funds.
Yeah.
If you invest in a C D, I'm not sure you get as good as a 0.25 right now. But if you invest in a C D, then there's a term on that you have to take out six months a year or five years. And, uh, this is paid continuously and we can take money out with no penalties.
Yeah, we got 0.25 per hour and it's a year tied up for a year, so.
How renewable are they? Are they tied up for a year?
No, it's tiny, but I have no restrictions.
It's rates are going up eventually, that'll come up.
Well, and they'll, they'll increase it.
Yes, that's just the minimum that they'll pay. If it goes over that, then they'll, uh, they'll increase it.
Yeah, and Cal, I think, Cal's very familiar with the fact that Florida statutes as far as investment of public funds. After the huge fiasco that occurred in California about 20 years ago, with all those junk bonds. The, the, the three primary focuses in this order of investor public funds are security, if you're saving secure. Second is liquidity, third is ready to return. That's absolute why. So that's what Cal's, you know, that's making sense.
Yep.
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to mention, everybody probably saw the fiasco in Naples where a
Yeah, management company.
Management.
I thought of you right away.
Yeah, I did too. CDs are pretty regulated and, uh, it's, uh, right now your audit's ongoing. And they should be completed fairly soon, but not only do we have our internal staff, uh, there's three, four people that look at it all the time. But we have a CPA that also, that we hire just as an extra set of eyes that goes through everything. So they do, uh, you know, temporary or onsite spot checking, every check, whatever, and all of the auditors tell us that, uh, that's probably the, uh, the strongest checks and balances they see.
But I think on, on that scenario, the main thing is these associations cannot get their money.
Right.
They have no access to the bank accounts.
Yeah, they don't. What, what, what company, I didn't.
American, American management.
East Trail, we do a lot of the condo associations.
They went to Costa Rica, they skipped.
He bought a plane, right?
Yeah, he bought a plane and everything, he skipped.
Yeah.
There you go. Yeah, I know it's a lot of dough, didn't it? What was it? I saw you still got breastplate, I don't know.
I don't know if they could hold it.
Yeah, took his plane, bought a plane from the capital, bought him a plane. But it was a lot of dough. I don't know how much it was.
Oh, yeah, he was taking from one condo, putting it in the other condo's bank account.
Yeah, it was like a binding scheme, yeah.
Yeah.
Forty million.
Yeah, okay, so you, you said, we're getting, you're, you're doing an internal audit or auditing last year's?
No, 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 you have a third party, you're required by statute to have a third party audit. And that's currently ongoing right now, but this will be for the previous fiscal year. We have a retired municipal auditor that owned his own firm. And he works for us just, it's not an audited statement, but it's what he would check if he was an auditor.
Okay, because I got a couple of recommendations here. Uh, I recommend that we don't, uh, pay any invoices that aren't itemized anymore.
Well, yeah, I, I know, I know where you're coming from, but it, it all depends on the company.
How can you audit something that doesn't, isn't itemized?
It's, it's, I think you're, you're picking on certain invoices.
I'm picking on one that I've asked for for six months to get itemized.
Yeah, but it's not all invoices are not itemized currently, yeah.
Which is that the engineering?
Yes.
The, the one I just approved has more detail than you can imagine.
Okay, because the last one I had didn't.
Now, this is a copy of it, it's how many pages long?
That's okay.
Yeah, well, we've done this, we've itemized by.
Yeah, and don't forget, this financial you're looking at right now is January. Last month when you were sitting here, you were looking at December and that request.
We're overthinking everything. I know, I looked at it, I'm worried, I looked at it. And, um, the other thing, see, you said we're being, uh, you're doing review. Remember what I told you about the, I told you there were some E R Cs that had changed that would affect the budget?
Nothing, there's been, no E R Cs.
Has have been changed, I know you keep telling me that. And, uh, here in the budget, uh, okay, it went to 360, right when we figure the budget based on, and now it's 354, so perhaps 6,000. So while you're having your internal audit, you can find out how.
Wait, you have a budget and you have actual, what are you talking about? What number? We actually probably only collected a little less than the budgeted.
I'm not talking about anything other than budgeting, I'm talking about actual budgeting.
Well, budget numbers have not changed.
Yeah, yes, it has. 2021, the assessment for the tax collector is 360. 2022, it's 354, so that means some E R Cs, something had to change.
That's 354 is the share.
You dropped the assessment rate in 2020.
That's what we have proposed. That's right, it's the same every year, look at.
But this is proposed, this is actual.
So we're in 320, we're in 2020.
The actual budget number is what you have to look at.
Right, the actual.
354 is the actual budget now.
And the year before it was 360 based on E R C.
Proposed?
Proposed. The actual budget is 360.
And the proposed is lower.
And the actual, from 2021 to 2022, it goes from 360 based on specific percentage of the tax collector. And then the next year, and now this year it's 354. And then, and you tell me the E R Cs haven't changed, that number should change.
What are you looking at? Because I, I have it right in front of me and the actual budget is 354.
I know.
That's what he's saying here. It was higher last year, he's saying. He's saying the proposed this year is lower than the actual.
Was before we knew for sure, we were gonna have a refund.
No, no, this isn't about the refund, this is after that. All that's done.
No, but it's for 2022, oh my god.
The, the refund impacted our budget for this year.
Right, for 2022. That's the proposed budget.
That's $6,000. It's not 13%. It has nothing to do with the refunds.
I don't know what you're looking at, but this actual budget has been the actual budget since it's been approved and it hasn't changed.
It has changed.
No, it hasn't. I check it every month.
What does it say right there at the top? 360, look at, look at 320, uh, 2021.
He's got it highlighted.
I got it highlighted at the top. That number should not change.
You have a budget for 2021, all right?
That's the, that's the actual budget.
We're in 2022.
No, but he's looking at the last line, the proposed, 2022.
Yeah, but it's proposed.
Right.
But it is, it is the budget this year.
No, but it was proposed. Did we, did we pass that proposed budget?
Total number of assessments that we collect. And it doesn't change, that number should be the same, 360, 354, they should be the same.
He wants to know why these are different.
Where is it different? Look at that.
360 is not the same as 354.
This is 2021, this is the following year.
It doesn't change, it's all based on.
And why are these numbers different?
He's asking why, Rob.
Why are these different? That's the question.
It means there were assessments that were changed.
There's 358, there's 319.
It's not budget, I'm not talking actual, I'm looking at the budget. When you budget each year, it's based on the same numbers.
Yeah, I, I.
I have no idea.
This is what I was highlighting to you before.
I always speech to everything, you guys.
The problem is.
Tell me why there's a difference.
Yeah, but when something is proposed, until it's a.
This comes on the water sewer.
He's not saying he didn't receive it, Cal. He's just saying he doesn't understand it, he wants to know why.
When we're going through the budget process, we have a proposed number.
Right.
And then we go through the process and we finalize it.
Right.
So that proposed number, there's no guarantee it won't change. And what the reason is, why it changed, we've been there.
2022.
Why are we rehashing something?
So, so, yeah, okay, okay. He has.
Do it at the time.
Another one of those.
Yeah.
And the budget, the fixed budget for 2020 was 360, 524.
Right.
The proposed budget for 2021 is the same exact number, 360, 524. He's saying, why did the 2022 proposed go down?
340, that means there's an assessment change, something.
The program, when you put it in, it takes the projected and puts it automatically into the new budget year. They don't, you know, maybe what we should do is have it, put the formula in where it says the throw equals whatever that is.
Because no, 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 what he, what he's concerned about, no, no, what he's concerned about is why did the number, let me print it in elementary terms, why did that number not change at all? From fixed 2020 to proposed 2021, but then from fixed 2021 to proposed 2022, it did drop.
You have to, you have to look at the adopted on both.
Right.
What you have there, the, uh, the 2022 is proposed.
No, no, you're not, you're not, you're not going where I'm going, okay? You're still wrong. This is.
It's not wrong, proposed is proposed, it's not a final number.
Okay, don't. That number is based on E R Cs, right?
Yes.
The E R Cs are the same in 2020 and 2021 and 2022, the year, number of E R Cs are the same. Their chart is saying there was no change in assessment and once we get past, uh, that debate that we did.
He's saying E R C is down.
Right, but you're looking at a proposed and the program just proposed it over, that's exactly what you have there, Rob.
Why would it change?
It's just an estimate of what you think your proposed budget is going to be.
But it's not proposed in 320, 2022, it's the actual.
That's not the actual.
What are we working on now?
He's saying that the approved budget was 354, the proposed was 360. And he wants to know why. And my problem with that is when you start out with your. And my problem with that is, when you start out with your proposed budget, there's things that impact that. And I know what you're saying.
Well, that's what he was.
The budget was system-generated to give us a way to start working on budget.
I know there's variations, but there's not variations on that line. That line does not change.
The actual, the adopted budget to that, there is no change. Now, twenty twenty-two, yes, because you cut the rate. Now, not in the general fund, but in the utility fund. I sent you last night.
Yeah.
There's no.
Now, what was the utility fund? And I checked, I went back, I don't, I don't know how many budgets, but two thousand eighteen, the tax selected was one.
I don't care what you thought, and I'm talking about what's, what you figured.
That's what he put in, that's what he put in. I, I don't know what you want.
I don't know how to answer that either.
Because of the previous.
It is, it was the same.
Oh, wait a minute, maybe it's, maybe, let me ask you this. The, that, the approved budget for that line was three sixty or three fifty-four?
Okay.
Approved.
And two years before it was been three sixty. So what made it drop?
Have to look at it if it, if it's.
They did, well, it's on, he's going to write it.
That is a proposed line, that was a working document.
I know, but she's saying the adopted is three fifty-four.
Let me check.
He's looking at proposed for this year.
I know, but you said the adopted's three fifty-four.
The adopted's three fifty-four.
Right, so three sixty last year.
The adopted for twenty twenty-one was three sixty?
Yes, and twenty twenty, that's what he's saying. So why did it drop? That's his question. It has to mean there was.
You'd have to look at that assessment role.
So you got to go by the twenty twenty-two adopted?
Yeah.
Okay, and if it dropped, why did it drop? Is it, he's thinking it's the value of ERCs?
It's not a value. What we did was on the, the utility fund. And I checked every adopted budget. Two thousand seventeen, it was one million, two thirty-two, one fifty-five.
Again.
Two thousand, it's relative, they're the same.
Nobody's talking about, that's a percentage.
The special assessment tax collector is in the general fund and the water sewer. You add them together, that's your total assessments.
Right.
Not just one.
But that's not what the budget pre-fund up.
Not just water sewer.
Okay, so then, two thousand nineteen, the same number, and this is a utility fund, one million, two thirty-two, one fifty-five. The dormitory was added, that should be the difference, but the dormitory was added. They were on the.
The special assessment tax collector.
It went from three twenty-three, four thirty-one, three twenty-four, seven seventy-six, so that explains that one.
I'll, I'll send you the same thing I did for the utility fund for the general fund.
But.
You have to look at.
I'm not, I'm not moving forward, but I, I get what he's saying. All he's saying is, what made it drop in the adopted?
Right, you understand he's saying the adopted general fund budget? He's not saying the adopted budget, which is general fund and water sewer.
I see what you're saying.
So you got to add the two together to get your total assessment.
But, I guess what he's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what he's saying is, he's looking at this. And, and in elementary terms, it's three sixty, twenty twenty, three sixty, twenty twenty-one, three fifty-four, twenty twenty-two.
He's not looking at the whole picture.
Okay.
Same line, no.
No, it's the same line in one fund.
Like I say, I presented this that has the utility fund, year to year. And the amount is always the same, except when the dormitory was added to the tax roll. And then the rate increased for twenty twenty-one for the bolt slips. And then this year, for twenty twenty-two, you had a decrease in rates. I'll do the same thing, now we can work for the general.
Now, decrease in rates was thirteen, averaged thirteen to eighteen percent. I'm only talking about six thousand dollars.
That's one item, he just named three.
The addition of the dormitory. Forget it, you, you, he's, we're basing a.
I know you're getting upset, but you have to understand, I have an accounting background. I understand how this process works. You're new, no, you're new to this process. I'm not a pharmacist. I can come up with questions about pharmacy that I think I'm on the right track, but then I don't have the full knowledge.
I'm telling you, he said there's this much water in the vial, and this is how much it is for three years in a row.
But I'm trying to tell you, you're not listening.
Same amount for that.
Two bottles equal one bottle, it's a gallon bottle, not a quart.
Well, then it's off by twelve thousand dollars.
The gallon bottle, but look at the other gallon bottle.
Done. I think what he's saying is that the same page for the same budget.
I know what he's saying, one bottle.
Any of those looks bad.
But your total is two bottles, no, your total is two.
We will do the same analysis on the general fund.
See, this, this all came about because, the one time I was sitting here, and I showed you, you probably don't remember, but we had, they had those two columns. And I don't know what happened to those pages, that showed there were four properties that had slightly different ERCs on them, over the years, over, between two years. I don't remember which two years it was, whether it was twenty nineteen. They were property, they were all listed in a column, and I don't remember if it was one page or two pages. And then I looked for that discrepancy in the assessments. Because that amount collected and put into the budget should be the same every time, because they haven't changed. Just that line, I'm not talking about any of those stuff, everything else is variable. But that stuff, our assessments, because you sent me all the zeros, nothing's changed. So that is a fixed item with a fixed revenue every year, and then all of a sudden it changed.
Would the utility vary, was that, would the utility E R T vary from year to year? I know, the O and M don't.
They didn't vary. The utility ERC shouldn't vary at all.
No.
But the O and M, as use changes, it could change.
Ah, that's general fund.
That's going to become fixed too, once we get that.
Right, but that wouldn't do it. I could see the utility flex. Well, and you, it's, the utility is going to flex.
But it hasn't yet.
When you added the dormitory.
Right.
It went up.
Yeah.
It wasn't having an assessment role.
It went from.
Let me finish. Then you look at when the rate increased on the bolt slips, there was an increase also for the general fund, the O and M.
Right.
This year for twenty-two, it shouldn't have increased, because there was no decrease for the O and M. I, but it did increase around, this is what I sent last time, do the same thing for the general fund.
I got what you're saying, I, I understand there were no changes, that's why that number shouldn't have changed.
Well, I didn't say there were no changes, there's no changes in individual assessment.
Yeah, because that's how.
But there could be a change in the assessment, that's a different thing. That would do it. Yeah, that would do it.
That would do it.
By adding the dormitory to the tax roll, because they used to be a direct bill.
Adding, right, that would change the assessment, which would change that number. Right, twenty-three, three twenty-three, three fifty, three thirty-two. Right, so I know why it changed.
What about your line, special assessments collected, and then they're, they're considered a bad debt, backed out? What if that number changes? In other words, it.
That's, that's variable, that's, that's variable, that's not.
Yeah, but if, if you look at, it, it's almost like the direct billing versus assessment, the two are the total assessment. Some, we go through the tax collector, and some switch to us, like the dormitory.
But what goes with the tax collector is that line item every year. And nothing changes unless it's to the whole rule.
But when you say the dormitory, was that because they went to direct bill?
They were direct billed, and we, because they were paid every year, we said, well, let's put them on the tax roll.
Put it back on direct bill.
Right, and I mentioned that during the budget, I said, we're putting them back on the tax roll.
Right, and that's explained right here, between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, it went from three twenty-three, which it had been for the previous three years, and then it went to three twenty-four.
We went through every tax bill for the last three years that we just, and there has been no D R C changes. Everybody pays the same.
Exactly. That's, so. That was my point, the number had to stay.
I, I don't know.
I'm, I'm going to look at it in a different way.
Utility fund will do it for the general.
Yeah, and I'll look at it a different way and see if I can spot something.
That's all you're looking for, is what, I just, because we're, we've been all over this.
Yeah.
Want this, you want that, I've got that twenty hours of like staff. I got a staff number quick, because you can't get a straight answer of what it is anyone wants.
Well, I guess it's part of your running the business, so.
No, let me, let me work on that, see what, what I see on it, before you go any further with the contact too. I might look at it differently.
It won't take us that long, I mean, you got our worksheets, we sent you the worksheets.
That's not even Twitter information. We have two hundred fifty thousand dollars we need to spend for this, that, and the other.
Yeah.
And we're worried, we're spending, we're spending a half.
I'm concerned about.
About six grand.
My account wasn't the much.
I know, but it is. We spent somehow thirty minutes up in this.
But it's what it's costing for that amount of money.
Right. What's, what's twenty twenty-three saying?
Same line, I probably spent that in.
Not there yet.
We'll carry twenty twenty-three, we're carrying the same number over.
Yeah.
And on the proposed, I'll make pretty well sure that it's the same number of what you had to do before.
Exactly.
So, financials, do you accept them?
Yeah, the only, the only question I had is the, oh, he's got, love this, is the SCADA control.
Yes.
And we had that year-end journal entry. And it, it did list there, the adjustment for the October SCADA control bill. But then the December and November bill seems to be the amount, yeah, November and December, I answered my own question, all right, because it was September, okay.
Oh, wait, are we?
I made a motion to approve the financials.
I second it.
All favor?
I'm just thinking Cal.
Aren't we spraying from these pieces right now, are we?
Yeah.
Hold, start, hold.
Not, no.
Does the equipment work?
Supposed to be working now, yeah, they sent a guy out to work that.
And the remote trigger works, new one?
Yeah. All right. I haven't done anything. No idea.
Why you thought you drove it once?
Dude, but I haven't seen it before. Oh, I mean, that was all fixed.
Okay, so the next item is, oh, did we have a second on the financials?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yeah, next item I had was the budget schedule for this year, like they were starting on that. And the, if the board could let me know before, you know, as soon as we could, what your goals or what you'd like to see in the budget, let me know. And we'll make sure they're included, but we're, and then we'll also talk about the draft budget. And that'll be distributed at the next meeting, and if you feel, if you need any special workshops. But we are restricted, we set the schedule up on your existing meeting schedule. So any workshops or anything else will be included in there. So, May twentieth, without having a special meeting, because your June meeting is on the seventeenth. By the fifteenth, you have to have a proposed budget that, you know, we'd send to the county. But if, if you're going to increase, it has to be done at that May twentieth meeting. Now, after that, you don't have to increase, and, you know, you can just move on, make any changes you want. But as a public carrier, it's when it's adopted, which would be August nineteenth.
Right, so changes can be made right up till then.
Right up till then.
Exactly.
Now, what we'll do is present the budget that you approved in May, but you can work on it all the time after that. Some tweaking here or there, but we'll still present and have available for the public the May twentieth. And then at the August meeting, we can make adjustments and either submit an alternate budget or however you guys want to do it.
I'd like to ask a favor, it just happened again today, and I think it's a big deal. I, I think we have to stop saying, up here, we have plenty of money. I think what we need to say is, we have sufficient money to run the district, or plenty of money to run the district. Because what I see and what I saw all last year, they've got lots of money, a lot of money, they got plenty of money. We don't, we don't, okay? For the last six years, prior to this last year, all maintenance was deferred, okay? That's backed up. There's seven million bucks here that we need to look at. Moving forward, we're not swimming in money. And by the way, the land is not sold, okay? It's not, and we're two years away minimum from seeing any money from that. So I just want to send the right message. We are not swimming in money, not at all. And every time we have a meeting, it's a hundred grand, it's sixty grand, it's twelve grand, not coming in. So I just think the residents need to know, we're not swimming in money just because the planned assessment's over.
In your budget, you have sufficient funds to operate the district.
Right.
And you have three hundred thousand set aside to address capital needs.
Exactly. For the twenty-three budget.
Yeah, okay, it's some communities that think, but they don't have a water and wastewater plant, right? Some communities who think that's sufficient.
Right. It's not.
But they don't have the water.
No, they don't have the water in the sewer, as they told us the other day.
I have one thing I'd like to include in the budget, is a review of the contracts. Offhand, I can't tell you, I think, when I think of the field service, I think he was three years, I think his contract might be up for renewal.
Would, Chris?
Yeah.
Oh, or Mitch?
Mitch.
You just renewed it for five years.
It wasn't five or three, I thought three for some reason, so, but for that reason, I think the board needs to be aware of when these contracts start and end.
And when they get renewed?
And when they.
What if we have discussions? What, are we doing performance reviews?
We haven't, not that I know of.
Don't get me wrong, I like everybody, I do. But are we doing, are we running it like a business? Are we doing performance reviews once a year? And they're just automatically renewing, and they're out of sight, out of mind.
If you got a contract that's renewable, it's renewable. You have clauses that say when you can modify that.
We got to just let go.
Performance, no, performance isn't part of it.
Should be.
You got your clause in your contract, that's what you have a contract for. If they're not performing, you have a way to get out of your contract.
Then why do we want to look at?
Because if your contract is renewable, it might have a clause, if it's renewed at a certain date, there's a seven percent increase. That impacts our budgeting.
That's what I'm getting at.
So that's what I want to see. You don't have to look at it, I want to look at it.
I agree.
Right?
But we should talk about it.
Well, you got to look at it to talk.
And we should base it, some of it on performance.
All right, the suggestion noted, but can we do that? I'll look at the few I have, I think I have most of them, I think most of the board has most of them. You sent out in November.
I'm sorry.
I think you sent out the contracts in November.
We can do a summary, put it on a spreadsheet, put.
Yeah, that way each year we're looking at it.
Sure. So, summary, contracts and integration. So, back on that, you'll be in it. The, I'm sorry, I. Any goals, objectives, things that you'd like to see, get those to me, okay, to make sure that they're included. Typically, what I provide to, as a draft budget, has no increases. We do give a, a pretty good projection on what we think they'll spend in each category, what your revenues are, and, you know, balance it that way. But we don't put in an increase. Now, if you have extras, we either adjust it internally in your expenditures. Now, if you have extras, we either adjust it internally in your expenditures, uh, and go from there. The, uh, last thing I had was a public records request. And I, I think there's really two things. Uh, with the public records request, Tony, I don't know if you know, but any that take, uh, you know, this is taking a lot of time. And, uh, uh, anything over, under an hour is one thing, uh, but it's over an hour. We should be able to charge whoever's requesting that information. Uh, the last one, and a lot of it was my fault, because I don't know how to print from my texts. So what I'm telling everyone is, don't text me because I'm not gonna do business by texting anymore. I still don't know, to fulfill this last request, I had to do a screenshot of all of the, uh, and turn them off and then scan them. And I, I still don't know how to. Until I come up with enough knowledge to do that technology, I tried different programs, I tried everything. But, uh, so text is not a form of business that I'll, and anything we do leaves a public record.
Yeah, we should, that should be eliminated somehow. I mean.
Yeah.
How do you eliminate it though?
I mean, you can't eat. You gotta put it to rules, wherever you're gonna do this. Text messages can't be.
No, I think that's like a law.
Oh, we, we can't do that.
Yeah.
If it's communication that's part of the business of being official.
Well, you can't tell us and we can't text. We shouldn't be texting anybody.
Well, we can't.
You can text them.
Well, text opens up. But that opens up personal phone to, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Public record.
Personal phone.
Yeah.
Tell a public official how to communicate with anybody else.
Right.
But I think as a matter of practice, that would be, you know, you don't want to create a public record not to use public technical texts.
Right.
So that's your fault. I was curious, but text is creating a public record.
But, but if, if he, somebody texts him, can he refuse to read it? I mean, I.
Well, the question is, is he, is the text being sent to him in his official capacity as the district manager?
Right.
Texts to him, like if somebody asks him a question.
Yeah.
If somebody asks him a question involving the district, it's a public record.
Right.
So the question becomes, for example, is you can say, do not text me, I will not respond to any texts. And that is what I'm saying is a global matter, so that the, the text that he receives arguably be a public record, because it's received, but if he doesn't respond, then there's no further public record. And then he may wish to, uh, block those coming in that are public records requests types. It, you know.
Well, no, even, even communication between us, he should block it, you know? Well, it puts him in a bad spot.
Well, I would suggest in the better practice for the board members is not to text anybody. Or not to text anybody else involving district business.
Right.
Sounds easier, but, yeah, I know. But I just mean, I want to protect him because it doesn't seem like he should, uh, have to say he sense of technicality. I don't, I mean, if he refuses to respond to a text, he's refusing to do his job. I mean, unless you respond by email or something, I bet.
Yeah, I can, uh, their emails fine.
But see, that text to you is still public record.
That's right.
Right.
That's a problem.
That's the problem.
Well, screen printing one is not that difficult.
Right.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you know, I, I sent probably, I don't know, four or five pages of, uh, communication, Wayne, Tony and I. What I, what I suggest, I mean, whatever government's do with regards to saying, you know, whether or not they accept texts. And what a response might be, it might be a standard sort of response, saying, you have sent me this text. It might be the district manager, I do not reply to requests via text. And here's my policy from now on, and I'm definitely blocking this number. Oh, let me look for that. I mean, I'll look for something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. As far as charges, uh, I can place a minimum amount of time before we start charging. What, what I suggest, it's always a good tip, uh, any governmental body or authority can establish a policy. It does not have to be viral, the policy as to what they consider the nature, if you have, if you have a public records request, and the nature of the requested records to be inspected or copied and read from statute is such as to require extensive use of information technology, resources, or extensive clerical or supervisory assistance by personnel of the agency involved or both. The agency may charge in addition to the actual cost of duplication, fifteen cents a page, your, yeah, a special service charge, which shall be reasonable and should be based on the cost incurred for such extensive use of information technology, resources, or the labor cost of the personnel providing the service that is actually incurred by the agency or attributable to the agency for the clerical and supervisory assistance required or both. I'll give you an example. I made a public records request to the city of County Board for another client. The public records custodian acknowledged the response as appropriate and then provided an estimate, said we estimated it will take two hundred fifty-six hours and that's extensive clerical or supervisory time. The labor burden, if I recall correctly, and if we go back and double check, because in the Sunshine Law Manual, case law, in terms of general's opinion, my recollection is, subject to being correct, is that labor burden can also be part of that. So the cost that that agency is charging for those hours is like twenty-five dollars an hour. Addition, that agency said, because it's going to take more than one hour of work. Also, the agency said, as a result of this, before we actually begin gathering the information, we need a deposit of one half of that amount. Again, that's, so I mean, these are all. A lot of times organizations like to be more casual and informal with their constituents as far as records requests. But it might be situations where they become overly burdensome to the organization or agency. By way of example, on this public records request, I provided, and I went through a number of email communications that I had with public officials, which generates a bill from me to the, to the district for my time. Now, that, my hourly rate is not something that could possibly be recoverable, but a reasonable cost too. In addition, to the extent that a person wants to make an onsite visit to look at records, and I've had this experience, I think I've mentioned to the board, the integrity of the records needs to be provided. So they may need to have supervisor personnel watching to be the member of the public looking at the records. And I had that situation with Kyler County once. I had a paralegal sit across the table from me for about four hours. Okay? And, 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 I mean, good, thank you. And, you know, and so that, again, because they maintain the integrity. So you, you have all these items in there, so I think the board may want to discuss or consider, we can get some examples of other organizations. And what's going to be extraordinary, it's going to be after thirty minutes, it's going to be after an hour, and the policies about deposits and everything else. And it's not obstructing or preventing a person from getting public records. Case law statutes, attorney general's opinions and other practices allow certain types of cost recovery for that. Uh, by way of example, you do the public records request to city and county board, it's all by email. All by email, so, city and county should make a public records request. And I know you can do it by phone sometimes, but that's the key, is to have, what's your agency custodian's contact information? But to the extent that the board wants to implement that policy, uh, I think we can, uh, implement a policy for the public records. Again, in terms of what's extraordinary, you may want to say only twenty-two hours. And not until it's fifteen cents a copy.
What about time limit? Like, if you make a public service request?
It's reasonable. There's no time limit in the statute. It's, it's.
It's hard to say.
Ninety-nine percent of the requests we get, we handle it in an hour. That's not.
It's on an hour.
And I'm still trying to ascertain, because I don't, I listened to the case, I never recalled ever saying that a person needs an attorney to make a public records request. And I've asked a person who asserted that.
Yeah.
As to where I could find it, and that person's not yet provided that. If they do, I will look at that. But in fact, I've never, uh, heard a bunch of meetings. I've never brought, to my records, I've never provided them my, my opinion that a person needs an attorney to make a public records request. If they want to hire an attorney, that's up to them.
Yeah.
But.
Well, my other thing is, you know, you have a workload, you have so many staff people.
Yeah.
And it, it happens to be at a time when you're getting a lot of requests, there's only so much you could do. And that's why I'd like to know, you know, I'm, I'm sure you prioritize what's more important, or if it's part of the next meeting or whatever.
What times we try, especially as a board member, we react quickly and throw everything at it. Um, it, uh, if it's to me, I try to respond immediately.
Would you like, would you like to have a, uh, a.
Obviously, our.
No, a, uh, request for attorney to come up with something for us for the next.
Yeah, I'd like to work, if it supports, just consensus from the uniform action.
Yeah.
Cal and I want to say a policy.
Yeah, happen so people know.
One of the unfortunate occurrences in the last few years were the hundreds and hundreds of lawsuits filed against public entities and private entities asserting non-compliance with the American with Disabilities Act by virtue of the documents on its website not being readily accessible.
Well, you went through that, right, with this?
Oh, I know, districts from Atlantic and East Coast filed a hundred and five lawsuits.
Right.
Uh, and, and as a result of that, a lot of the, my, my local government clients, they said, okay, we're going to substantially reduce what's available online. Because of that, because otherwise, in the past, my, my other clients, they said, we, we put everything up there. I mean, reams and reams and volumes, because it was relatively easy, people, and minimized the amount of public records. Now, because of all that litigation and the expense to convert it to a media compliant format, uh, a lot of my district clients are going to the minimal necessary to, it's all in the statutes. It's really unfortunate, quite frankly.
Okay.
It's also frustrating for me, my private sector factors, uh, because I, I, now, I made a public records request before, a lot of times I can just go in, search, so.
Yeah.
But a little more because that, that's words consensus.
Yes.
Not for discussion. Uh, the other thing that I had, and this is what I'm discussing with all my boards, but, uh, we have a lot of responsibilities that, you know, to, uh, our clients. And that time's gotta be managed. Uh, so what I'm telling them all is that any request for information should come to me. And that, uh, we'll make sure that it's clearly defined what it is, we're both on the same page, and then we'll get that information. But.
I'm glad you said that, because sometimes I say to myself, is there somebody else I could ask to relieve you of something?
It's, it's better to talk to me. Um, it's, it's just, uh, you know, some of the people are getting overwhelmed. What about an actual full, we don't have a, you know, we're not a big firm.
Right, right.
So we've got eight communities we manage, and all of them have nine with gateway. And, uh, you know, they all have demands that, uh.
No, I think you'll give that, because I think I, if he's overburdened, I give it to one of the staff people.
Well, you make that decision.
But should you have an actual document in place, a form, you know, that people fill out for requests?
No.
No.
No, most of them are pretty easy. I, I, I get a, uh, you know, either a board member, but a public records request. I get a, uh.
That's what I mean, a public record.
Yeah, it's, typically, they're not that bad.
If the county gets, uh, email request only, I don't see why that would be.
Or, well, we'll just look at what others do.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll come up with something, but, but, uh, most of them, really, I, we, we handle them within an hour. And, uh, almost all of your records are on electronic formats.
Yeah.
So.
So you gotta tell these people who text you to please email.
Yes, that.
The text is not.
Fight text. And any request for information or, uh, whatever needs to be.
Is everybody okay with that?
Give me a call.
Yeah, yeah, we're all okay with that.
Okay. All right. The, um, let's see.
Field management.
Uh, field management. If, uh, maybe I can go through those and then we'll go to the report, the, uh, his follow-up items.
Sure.
That'll cover a lot of the things. The monument painting and update, uh, and that is, we still need the agreement, the license agreement before we do that, but that's, uh, uh, twenty-five hundred from Marco Island for the painting event. Uh, it was also asked about painting the monuments at Newport Drive, and you have a proposal in your package for that for forty-five hundred. That, uh, it says Case Drive, but it's actually Newport.
Oh, I wondered about that.
Yeah.
What's the difference?
Yeah, he, when he said it, he kind of messed it up.
Yeah.
The, um, so, once we have that signed, uh, is that something you want to proceed with?
If you have it signed, but.
The agreement, the license agreement.
Yeah.
What are we waiting?
So we could go ahead and.
The license agreement, unless Tony has it now, I, I don't like. The license agreement for the monument.
The entrance.
I have, I've not yet sent it to Mr. Sanchez, though.
Okay.
So I'll send it. So if you can read.
If you want.
Is it the same firm?
It's the same.
It's the same form as the last one.
And it's the same firm.
Are we using the same firm to do both?
Oh, yeah, so they have to both of them.
They're probably gonna want to do both at the same time.
I would think so, too.
Yeah, I would, too.
Let's get the agreement signed.
Okay, yeah. If you can, Cal, send me again, I think Mr. Sanchez.
Pardon?
Email address.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. You can email that to me.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Sanchez, Profectum, Profectum is the owner of Track B. Uh, I don't have any of those information. Uh, I think Sam knows.
Sam can probably send it to you.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it. Thank you.
He doesn't take texts.
No, no, I mean. I mean, Casey.
Okay, so, item one and two on the painting, those will be delayed. The airplane club, I, I don't know.
It's done.
It is done?
Yeah, it looks good.
What about the rest of the area that is an airport club?
They do the whole thing.
Oh, they do the whole thing?
Yeah, they did it.
Yeah, it looked like that was the agreement.
Yeah.
Said they do all of it.
Yeah, they did it all.
Did they get the, uh, the, the chairs and everything that was scattered around today?
I don't know, but I mean, I mean, it's all mowed. I heard, I heard them out there mowing it.
Yeah.
The actual product today.
It looks good.
Yeah.
I didn't check out. That reminds me of something, and, and it's just, it has to do with this. Up at the curb, if you go up past the water plant, you make the turn to the gun plant. We kept talking about the potholes, the potholes.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the guy, um, Corey from the gun, uh, the claims called me up and he said, Ray, what's all that water going across the road? I said, I don't know. So I went up there and there's water coming across the road. And it's, I mean, it's been dry for like two weeks. I said, what the hell is this? And then, and it's where the potholes are, there's people driving over it. So I asked Mitch, I said, Mitch, what the hell is that? And he said, uh, he said, um, well, there's an overflow of some sort on the north side of the road, that when they make too much water or make too much reusable water, some, they have to purge it, and they purge it there. And the water comes across the road. And so we take a look at it, because that's what's causing the, their bottles. And, and that's what's doing it. It's just in that big one spot, and it's still doing it. But he did look at it, but I just wanted you to know that, because it's, it's an, it's some kind of a manual overflow. He said, when we make too much reused water, they purge it back in there. The reason I'm bringing it up is, it's right where that ten acres of supposed conservation land is. And right there, there is a swamp. It's on the gun range side. That's why I forgot to bring it up again.
Yeah, I thought he had that fixed. The, uh.
This was, this was two weeks ago where it could be regulated, yeah.
Well, he's got that fixed.
Yeah.
But this may be, you know, there's some ponds over there.
Yeah. And they dump into it, there's a pipe there, there's some kind of a big pipe there. I don't know if that has anything to do with it. But just beyond that, you know, there's like a swamp here.
On our side of the road, on our side.
On the north side, yeah, you'll see, you'll see the water comes across in there, and that's where the potholes keep coming up.
Yeah, and the south side doesn't look like there's much of anything.
No, it's dry. Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
So I think you did, I forgot to ask more about it.
I'll follow it. Yeah, I need to talk to him anyway.
But that'll, that'll, that'll cut out a lot of the potholes.
Yeah, I noticed the one south, around the planet, south of there. Yeah, I noticed the ones south, around the planet, south of there, they've been filling on a record basis.
Yeah.
So that'll prove it on Union Road.
This time of year they get traffic, the rest of the year it's dead. Uh, we'll, we'll get on. Union Road, the sign, and there's a proof of it, and I.
I was confused there, is it one sign, both sides?
No, no, they, they didn't change, remember, we told them to look at it?
Yeah.
They, they put two-sided, but it is two one-sided signs, so the price is right.
Yeah.
But it's just, they didn't word it right. Where is that?
So, only looks like one side, doesn't it?
Right here.
I know, where is it?
Here.
It's 10. Page 45.
Everybody's got a different.
48 at the top.
That's a geospatial.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess there's a question, there's, there's an agreement, is that a perfect for the sign, where the gun club was, it's remarkable, 2014, between the district and Luland and Gulf Coast Place? And it says that, there was me. The gun clubs show maintain the sign by keeping it clean and free of millstone, and by promptly repainting if necessary when paint is faded or is peeled. I guess this is a brand new sign with brand new copies.
Yes.
So I guess we, we need to have, revisit this agreement to be clearer as to ensure.
Yeah.
The existing sign was shared with the hotel.
Right, yeah. Yeah, well, this agreement was between the district, the gun clubs and the place.
Yeah.
Excuse me, but that sign was, was it not at the end of Union Road where it splits north and south, is the sign Tony's referring to? Not the one on?
Not the one, the one on 41.
Is the one that's here.
It's also the one that the agreement was for.
Okay.
So the one at the end of Union Road, this one over here?
Yeah.
So all they're going to do is maintain it. Because it was originally, it said the hotel, and it said gun ring on the bottom.
Right.
It references Exhibit A, but.
So my writing wasn't involved in it. My writing isn't involved in that.
No, and because it was a total rerun, right, of the sign, you know, I assume that, but I think Tony's right, that we probably should have an.
Oh, yeah. I mean, why wouldn't?
Yeah. Yeah, if, if you're okay with this.
Yeah.
Approve it, and then contingent upon a new agreement or acknowledgement by the guy.
Yeah, so move.
Second.
Yeah. So the guy's going to do both sides of that.
One-sided sign.
Russ?
Yeah.
You know, I really don't think the gun club should have to do anything to the sign, because we don't maintain the road very well. It's just my two cents.
It's getting better, I mean, yeah, I agree with it, but it's getting better. What would you recommend if the board wanted to?
That's true, I guess it's for you.
Eliminate that agreement, and just, I mean, it is in the CID right away. Board decision, yeah, but I mean, they could say that they're just going to terminate that agreement, and that the board's going to maintain a sign, a directional sign at that location. I don't think they're really presented and motivated by Muck One.
Yeah.
I mean, let me say this. It's looked gross for a long time. Now, it's going to be brand new. If I were them, why would I care about planning it once in a while, advertising their place? You know? They get this, they get the sign for free.
For free.
And I don't think they'll have a problem with that, I'll ask, I'll go talk to them tomorrow.
Because we don't have to advertise them.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't think, I don't think this is wrong, I say do the agreement. I don't think they'll have a problem with it, I wouldn't, why would you have a problem?
It is a promotional sign.
And it'll prohibit it from being gross.
Business sign.
Like it is now. It's a businessism.
But so was the original.
Yeah, right, exactly, right. And who knows, what the next one's going to say, you know? Could say Disney World.
All right. 200 miles this way.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we have the attorney's report.
But, yeah, do you want to approve that?
Oh, we did. We did. I have a question, on page 40. 20, 125, Morning Star K with the washout, two months later, nothing's been done. What options do we have here?
Page 40.
Page 40.
Let's spin the story on Sunset K, too, nothing gets done.
Yeah, Morning Star K, filled with silk, you know? And we've asked the developer to take care of it, they don't take care of it. So again, we, we have carrots for those.
Yeah, what recourse do we have?
Exactly, that's the question I'm asking.
Well, I mean, one recourse is we're trying to code enforcement of the accounting model, because they're supposed to have a social area.
Yeah.
Or construction. And then secondly, some course, I've been saying, your activity has resulted in this, you need.
Yeah, here's an example, all the construction going on on my block, I didn't, it didn't appear anything was different until the construction started next to me, and they put up the black plastic vapor.
Yes, they put it all.
And there's no mess.
Right.
Now, isn't that county that says you have to do that?
It's my understanding, it's even.
Yeah, my understanding is two.
And yet the county comes out and does their inspection.
The one builder who doesn't do it is the one who's going to contest it. If he has a, one inch, if he has one strip of gack grass.
Grass, he considers that.
Yeah, a barrier.
Yeah, but at the end of my block, there's three homes, and one is a different builder, he doesn't have it either. So.
So it may be a matter of.
But I'm appreciative that the guy did it.
Code enforcement, calling code enforcement and.
Yeah.
Getting something going there.
I think, I think that we ought to do that, because I mean, it's not like we haven't asked the gentleman to fix this.
Yeah, I think at that point, it's code enforcement.
Because when they're doing their inspections, I don't know what they're doing, but when they go, when the builder goes to do the final CO, this needs to be addressed.
Yes.
You're quite intense, I want to be quite, yeah.
It's blocking, it's, it's our, our swale and our drainage ditch.
Yeah.
And we're going to be, we're going to be the ones to take care of it.
I hate to knock the county, but I stopped and spoke to one, and he says, oh, that's not my department.
There it is, yeah. Master of Caliars County.
Yeah.
And, and the county building official.
Yeah, about that, that's what I would do, just haven't done anything, and the county should have told them.
So we'll look for enforcement through.
Code enforcement.
Yes, code enforcement, and we'll also modify the building expectancy.
File the complaints online, it's, they, they are so proud that way, so maybe you can upload photos. Give them the address, upload the photos, tell them the nature of the issue. And then also, I would send it to the building department at the same time.
Okay.
I don't know what the permanent number is.
Okay, anything else on any of these items?
That was it, thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to the attorney.
Yes, nothing further, status quo, but you all made a good point that. Now, the board's, on presentation, contact the attorney for Prep Mac, let them know about defending revisions to the possibility of discussion methodology and rules, and see if that will resolve their issues, so that maybe it can go away. But I made a note to call our attorney.
Yeah.
If he's looking at Lot 13 again, should work. Yeah. Can I add to your question yesterday or day before?
I'll give him a call, any, an issue about redoing the whole approach to assessments.
Substantial reduction for those people.
Yeah, usually, arguably, goes where I think that's what the board's.
Yeah.
Was he somehow right all along? With his argument?
You sound like, do you have any?
I, I mean, the specialist said that it was too high. Yeah, but that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
I don't want to concede any right or wrong, because we have a consultant that says you're free to do.
Yeah. Let's keep going.
Yeah, I like what they did.
Cage Drive Monument License Agreement, I have it prepared, I'll send it to Mr. Sanchez, now my name is email address, thank you, Sam.
Yeah, now you have the, the agreement for the other monument?
Oh, not in fact from the property board, I think.
Okay.
Now, I'll double check to see if I sent the revised exhibit or not to the Macamies, I'll double check.
Okay.
I may not have sent the revised exhibit. I'll double check on that. Oh, Rules of Amendment Regarding Update and Latest Draft, I tried to, and again, this, the hearing will be March 18th. You all had the pleasure, I think, of looking at the last iteration, I sent you, I was trying to differentiate the most recent changes in yellow highlighting, I hope that was not correct. Are there any other, and appreciate the concepts and thoughts that you all had. Any other additional thoughts right now? Again, you can make further changes at the public hearing. And for the public, I put a copy in the back of the room, and I'll have that, at the hearing, I'll have multiple copies for the public also, if they want to see it then. But in advance, they can always make a public request detail.
Yeah.
This is the revised letter that'll go in the utility bills.
Well, this is the rule, but I'm just trying to.
I don't know what they're saying.
I still wonder, what about the ER, I mean, ERCs are established, UERCs are established for all properties except our property bank. What are we doing about that? I mean, I.
What do you mean established?
Well, residences one, condos point four, I mean, point eight, whatever, but we don't have anything in the vacant lands still. You know what I mean, there's nothing that addresses for when we go to sell.
I think that isn't considered vacant land, because we own it as a government entity.
Yeah, what happens as soon as we sell it?
Then we. Depends what goes in there.
The builder, whatever they go build there.
If somebody puts in homes, then it's one residential ERC and one. Well, that's up to us, that's a part of the deal, time and game.
How is it up to us, once it's on there, it's on there.
No, it doesn't get on there first, before they even put it on there, they get charged.
Right, yeah, it's not on there till they come to us and tell us what they want to do.
Same way we pay them.
We say, yes, we can do it.
And how much?
And this is how the ERC should name.
I think, I think it might be a good point, I'll, there's a cap on the number of utility ERCs, correct?
Yes.
There's a cap right now. There's a number that, that's currently being utilized or assigned, and that delta is what is available for the district to assign that parcel.
Right.
What I think might be.
Or to other parcels.
There's another parcel by the hotel.
Or other parcel, so I think what might be helpful is to put in there, we, that cap has been there for a long time. The system was designed and allocated, it's to say, at the present time, these are the number of utility ERCs in the district. And that the allocation of ERCs is within the discretion of the district as to any current vacant unapproved lands, but.
Yeah.
Other than those that were going to sign. I, I think it's a good idea to come over there.
Okay, because there's, once they buy the property, even if they don't give us a plan, O and M goes on it.
Which is different.
Four per acre, I know it's different, but we know what it is.
Right.
It's a known. That's why I want it to be a known for the utility at the end of it, because when they buy that property, they get four ONMs per acre.
Right, that's okay, but the utility, we can custom, just like they did with Orchid Co.
But if you're a use, but if you're a developer, at least you know what your overheads.
You're going to know, when you cut the deal, you come to us, you say, this is what I need.
You have to tell us what you develop.
It's going to be custom tailored to them.
Yeah, if they say, I'm going to put condos in there.
Right.
We're going to tell them it's point eight per condo for.
We don't have to tell them, we already know what it is.
Well, exactly.
But you don't know what they're going to put there.
Anyway, it's, we're going to put in 300 condos, and we'll say that that's 240 ERCs.
But as soon as they buy whatever, they start paying the O and M.
Right.
You know, you're, you're going to allow the board to decide when they start paying the ERCs.
All right, if they buy the property in April, when do you think the O and M start that they pay for? The next billing cycle, right, the assessment goal.
Right.
So if they were to buy it in April, we're going to ask them, how many ERCs do you need, and that'll go on the same billing year.
The O and M. And the other one, because we own the land, we can custom tailor it, just like the CID did when Higgs built Orchid Co. He came to them and said, I need this, they said, okay, here's your ERC, and it's only because, Russ, we own the land.
Right.
It's not privately owned.
That's the only reason.
So we don't pay taxes on it either.
Just for perpetuation, I was trying to, I could. Focus on utility ERC, that's right, just for now. I think it's probably a good idea, and we'll put Cal on date on that, to say, you know, there's a matching number of utility ERCs, T60, whatever the number is. The allocation of the utility ERCs is within the discretion of the district.
Right.
You know, based upon development plans and engineering principles, something like that. So that gives the district ability to do that at the time of the sale. As far as the Davidson, can we look them up some way? The concept's fine with you?
Yeah, yeah, and again, it's, whatever the developer's planning for that property. It's going to be part of the sales contract and so forth.
What I'm saying, the concept, so we can address, that's a good, good question. As to the O and M, ERU, as, that's something, when we adopt the methodology, when does that get chewed up, when does that get applied to the plans? I think Russ has addressed that in his report, I like his hand, and we can have double check with him on that at the, at the hearing. To make sure, remember to ask that question.
Now, and getting back to the utility ERCs, the board, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony or Cal, the board has the ability in that sales contract to negotiate a takedown program, too, that maybe they.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's correct, but I don't want, I don't want to blur.
Now, it's only because, it's, it's only because the district owns the land, that's the only variable. We're also not paying taxes on it, it's because the district owns it that we have that luxury. Here's the horse race, right now Sanchez is talking about ERCs and some condos. Newian is talking about even a tower, or 90 condos, or 150 hotel rooms. That's all going to eat up ERCs, and then the lowest number I've heard back here was like 160, okay? There's only 266 total, so it's going to be a horse race.
First come, first served.
And it's going to be first come, first served. If Newian comes to us with plans, and he wants X number of ERCs, that could leave this useless. We're not going to have them.
And then Ray goes at the horizontal.
Right, that's right.
It ain't the war.
No.
Can I throw another wrench in this?
Yeah.
I heard that lot at the end of Cage Drive, the five acres in there, I heard it might have sold, and they have no ERCs. So that's another thing.
I'm encouraging you, man?
Yeah, unless they, they, if they came to us, we could take them in, give them ERCs, and they would have to hook up a force main and force line, yeah. So we could, they, we could take them in.
Yeah, that's another area that might require ERCs.
Right, so, as you can see.
First come, first served.
Right, if he puts up, Newian is the wild card, none of us in this room ever thought that hotel was going to sell, and we never thought it was going to sell for that much money. And the fact that it did tells you he's going to get motivated. And Sanchez has trucks over there now, he's moving too.
He is.
Yes.
Working on this.
David. The part about the phase and take down, that's a separate contractual matter from, the rule establishes the basis for the authority of the district to make the allocation.
Right.
And however that happens, it's upon request of the property, given the coming of the plans.
Right.
So, okay. Any other comments from the board suggesting to the rule?
Is this portion?
Yes.
Oh, that's, that's the next one, it's okay. Oh, yeah.
Rainbow bright.
The rainbow colored, pink, blue, yellow, and red, whatever.
Yeah. So you need a motion to.
No, I've got the rule, since we're sharing already. What I will do, I'll have clean versions, you know, for the board, and this version for the public.
No colors?
So.
So whatever happens, like, these rules are broken somewhere.
By us, someone can try to enforce it, they can go to court to try to enforce it, and why, I mean, drug relief mandatory.
Okay.
That's always out there.
It's on. All right, so now your ATBs and golf carts.
Okay, I've been all the way down.
I don't know.
That was just the answer. They have the corrections David made, you got a conversation on.
It's what David just gave you, I don't know, did that have the changes?
Well, I sent some things to Jennifer yesterday with some changes, some things that I just noticed were missing, as far as some of the rate information.
Yeah, they went out about 12:30 yesterday, before I left my.
Yeah.[1761.44] Other than the rates, I mean, it was more dramatic or something.
Well, it was inconsequential.
It was irrigation rates missing for the RVs, commercial hotel units.
Okay.
Did it get listed?
All right. I don't know if she did or she didn't.
If you can, I sent an email. Yes.
I was probably already on the road. I left at 7:30.
I'm just saying, so Jennifer, everybody has that, we need to.
We need to pitch up with Jennifer.
Yeah. Okay, ATVs, golf carts. That's relatively simple.
They just play this word.
Operation of an ATV on certain roadways. Or is that a copy? The operation of an ATV defined on the public roads or streets of the state is prohibited. Except that an ATV may be operated during the daytime on unpaid roadway where the posted speed limit is less than 35 miles per hour. And the county is exempted from the section if the governing body of the county, the county commission, votes to exempt the county from the section, I'm not aware of Congress, I haven't been doing it. So the operation of an ATV on the district's road is prohibited.
Yeah.
With regards to golf carts, operation of golf carts on a public road is prohibited. Unless it's been, you know, it can be otherwise. Unless there's a retirement community, that's where you can have a gated retirement community, you can do it. Or if Khyber County designates your roads as being golf carts amenable. An example, use of golf carts upon these following designated roads in Khyber County has been approved by the county commission. Goodland, Ave Maria, and Chupolski Island Implantation. So. The market is, they're not in the jurisdiction of the county.
They're a city.
And I don't know, Mark Miles adopted a code allowing certain roadways to vote. That being said, so, you know, if the community is interested in, again, this involves public roads, which are the district roads. Community has an interest and they have the district roads. They can both have their own. Legally, then we have to go to the county and say, okay, what are the steps that you all believe necessary to designate that?
Well, we already have a number of them in the community. And to make it legal, I think we would ask the county commissioners to make it legal in, I mean, they can't go out on 41, but they can stay in, in the back on either side just to make it legal. Because if not, then, you know, if a Khyber County sheriff comes down here, they can ticket them for. And there's already a number of them that are here.
There are no speed limits.
Legal speed limit? Yeah, it's 25 mile an hour speed limit.
Now, the county, the county may say, well, we can't designate it because it's not a county road. But then, whether the county then says, okay, you can designate. Well, I think we'll start that conversation, that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, just find out, yeah, one way or the other, just make it legal for these people to ride their golf carts around the neighborhood. It's not like it's gonna hurt anybody.
We're not talking about private sheets, we're talking about district. So to the extent that you have the community-owned roads, I'm not applying this to that. And if they have those three vehicles, they can register their title, who do they register?
Yeah, a lot of them aren't registered.
Should they be registered?
They are registered.
Golf carts?
Yeah.
Well. What happens if there's an act?
I think they're supposed to.
Well, this is the whole, of course, again, the whole issue is if it's, I don't know if county, county requires that you're a registration. I'm just looking at this. Or could, if it just says they have to purchase insurance, or could codes registered? So could you go private road? Public? Public, either? Okay, no, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just phone roads. Then that becomes a question, if the district can establish a policy, we, I did it in one community, but it's a 55 plus community. That's where it'd be neat, public reserve. It's gated 55, it's retirement. It's a self-contained retirement community, and there's a separate statute as to that. If the district can do it, we can adopt rules or regulations and require it. So we'll check on that after we talk to the county.
I just wanna make it legal for the people that are already dealing.
Impossible. As to the, again, the ATV is relatively simple. One I added to the first report described beforehand was the Stellamar, you're talking Stellamar's South.
North.
Norbert.
Should call this?
Yep. Calls that.
Yeah.
What we wanted to know.
Still, it was the one that came up last meeting where they've.
They want to stripe it for parking.
Well, they've got some stripes right there.
Yeah, they wanna go from stripes this way around and put them together and make it in and out this way rather than around.
Just let me give a quick, quick update. I was out there.
Oh, I see.
Around the perimeter, they do have the.
Right.
Parking stripe for that. And there had been some striping out into the cul-de-sac, but it looks like it's been blacked out.
That was a pickleboard for my understanding.
Oh.
They took it out. You know, that's somebody's drive, that was on somebody's drive. That was a privately done thing.
Okay. Okay. But that's been blacked out.
Yes. The issue was, was emergency apparatus making the circle for the striping.
Management, could they make the turn?
And of course, the question is, is it ours or their? Or they, that's the question.
I guess it's interesting because the Stellamar shop is a different situation.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, the agreement that we have relates to, doesn't provide ownership, this is maintenance agreement.
Right.
And grant of easements solely on the maintenance services. That's, the district is willing to accept the maintenance, repair, and replacement responsible for the facilities, and the facilities are defined as the.
Stormwater management.
In the asphalt surface.
Yeah.
And the asphalt surface.
For the asphalt surface, but not the storm. That's correct. We, they decline the stormwater.
Correct.
Surface. They were to replace the asphalt. So the question is, is this the CID's to say, yes, you can re-stripe it? Or is it up to them and they can re-stripe it all they want? That was the question we wanted.
Yeah, the question is, it becomes whether or not that striping interferes with the district's maintenance, repair, and placement. Especially the replace on the asphalt surface, right? Again, the district, you know, so the district has an easement to perform that work. So the district has an easement necessary for the maintenance, repair, replacement of the asphalt surface. So we have that easement. So the question is, does that striping interfere with the access? No, it does not.
No.
Does the maintenance, repair, and replacement responsibility increase the hours of the striping? And if the answer is yes, then arguably they're interfering with our rights under that agreement.
It is, it increases our.
Yeah.
If we choose to stripe these, the areas that.
That they're not originally.
Which weren't originally approved on the engineering.
And that we didn't strike originally either. Well, what about emergency apparatus, fire truck specific?
Well, they went to, my understanding, they went to them and they said, there's no problem.
We asked them if you had something right.
No, I know, yeah. Well, that's what we made.
Than writing, but that's what they said. So, you know, I just wanna get it straight for them so they can figure it out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, they do their own strike, can they do their own striking?
Yeah, but we're doing the damage.
We pay it, but they stripe it.
Well, that's the question. Is it, is it ours to allow them to re-stripe or is it their? If, if we were to go in there and do a pavement rehabilitation or replacement, then we would have the basic obligation, I believe, to replace the striping that was original to the project and not the extraneous stuff that was put around the cul-de-sac.
But 10 years from now, we don't have a policy in place. We need something fixed in place so that future board members have a reference. We need something more than a handshaker. That's what we're saying, I think.
No. Yeah, right now, the district's easement rights and district's maintenance obligations are maintenance, repair, and replacement of the asphalt surface. So we're responsible for the maintenance, repair, and replacement of the asphalt surface. Arguably, if they engage in activities, it's difficult to say it's really interfering with the easement that we have for, but it does increase the cost of maintenance.
Yeah.
Or repair or replacement if the district goes in there, performs that work. So I think it's appropriate to say, no, don't do that if the district has an objection to that enhanced additional cost at later time. Again, if it wasn't on the original SIP, if it wasn't the original SIP, then we would need to.
Well, replace it.
Replace it.
There's the only, if we have to go in there, which we eventually are going to do, and redo them again, we're gonna do that. I mean, it's just a matter of time and bring it down to price we can afford to do it, okay? After that's done, if they wanna stripe it horizontally, as long as they provide us from the fire department and waste management, that it's not going to interfere with their ability to get in there and pick up trash and, and to get in there and fight a fire, there will be no additional charge to the, to the, that I see, to the CID. So, you know, why don't we let them do it if they can, you know, they can send us that information that says, hey, it's not going to interfere with those, those two particular things, trash and fire.
And would they, would they not need to have an amended development plan from Khyber County for Khyber County?
I believe that people would look at all those features and factors. Yeah. I think they would need to because that original plan went through the Khyber County review process and it was approved that way. Now, the changes, it should go through Khyber County again and have an amendment done. Or just a substantial change or whatever the mechanism is.
And of course, it becomes, should be the county, so county may be getting an application for the particular striping issue. Here's the agreement, which the district has, we have the easement. And then the county will say, you consent to it or not consent to it? That would be one of the questions I'm sure they would ask.
Well, and that may be something we can float past Jamie French or whoever is.
We have the community to go.
Yeah, what needs to be done there by, by, by the association, if anything.
The, the question I had on this was, the agreement appears like the, and this was before my time, but the agreement appears like it was intended to maintain like in a roadway.
Right.
And by striping it, we changed the use to a parking lot. And I don't think that the, the CID should be maintaining in the local parking lots.
Well, that, that's the question. And, and, you know, or do we take that portion out of the agreement? And say, yeah, in other words, say, look, the CID will maintain Stellamar Strive North, straight up and down. We will give you back the circle. You will maintain it. And you can stripe it as you see fit, once you get, you know, approval. And say, this is yours and we're, we're gonna, in other words, take it out of that agreement that was signed with 2014 or whatever, and give it back to them and let them have it and they can do what they want. They wanna turn it into a parking lot and the county allows them to turn it into a parking lot, let them do it.
What about taking back over their drainage?
Well, the drainage is ours.
No, it's not.
No.
No.
No, we don't know that.
That's the problem.
They want us to take it.
We do the drainage for everybody else.
Well, like, no. No, no, we don't do it for the south, we don't do it for the individual developments over off of Newport. The only little we're doing in Newport is Newport K, Newport Drive, and Barring Star. All the rest are private.
It is typically not a public entity that maintains individual drainage systems. Look at Publix, their parking lot where they've got the drainage basin. I mean, Publix takes care of that. The county does it. Does residential make a difference?
No, because apartments and condos typically, those are private systems also.
Well, that's true. But we need to give, we need to give them an answer.
Yeah.
What the hell are we doing with them? You know, I mean, one day it's this, the next day it's this. What are we gonna do with the paving? Are we gonna do it? We were just waiting for some other thing to happen.
We're just waiting for money. Yeah, we were looking to do the paving. Oh, we're swimming in.
Oh, yeah.
We were, we, we actually paid bits to do the paving. At the same time, we also got the thing to enhance the drainage in a way and also benefit the lack of the pavement by putting in a centered valley gutter. And at that point, the prices were very high, you know, the, and they continue to be high right now. And it was deferred. The, the other reason it was deferred was because the condo association would have to pay for the valley gutter. Yes, that is not our responsibility. So we brought up taking in the whole thing and taking over the storm, the sewer as well. And then the question was, if we're gonna do it for them, do we not do it for everybody else in the associate in a rent here? And the CID takes over the storm drainage and the roads for, you know, of the ones that are here? That was the question.
So we're still there. We haven't given them an answer.
Well, no, the question is, is they're not going to wanna pay to put the storm, the concrete storm drainage in. They've already said that. So, you know, that's why I'm in favor of, let's give it back to them, let them do with it as they see fit. And except, you know, in there that we would be responsible to be able to, to get in there to maintain the, the storm sewer over to that, that dry lake bed or whatever. Yeah, actually, we would have no drainage at all in there. The only thing we would be responsible for is our water, fire irrigation, and wastewater. And then if we do need to do repairs there, we just do the spot repairs where we needed to do maintenance on the water line or whatever we have in there.
We're still responsible to pay them, right?
Currently. Now, if we amend the agreement that they would own the entire responsibility for the pavement, then we would not have that responsibility.
The cul-de-sac though, or the turnaround, whatever you call it, there's no man, sanitary manholes or anything else up in there. They're all on the dry.
There would be probably some lines that go up there to serve those units that face the cul-de-sac on the west side.
Our sun.
On our side. Yeah. And there, you know, there is this small little stub before you hit the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, it's, it's one right there, and then there's a storm drain right in the middle of the cul-de-sac. That's it. There is no other manhole that I saw on that.
I'm trying to remember where that run, run, that manhole run ends. I think it does go a little ways up that stub before you hit the cul-de-sac. I can't recall.
I'm not sure what direction the board wants to take on this. But if you don't want to, we could have Tony send a letter to the, their board saying that it appears that you have changed the use of that lot of that parking area to a parking area. And we don't wanna maintain it, still in a rested in Stellamar's north to dry. And, you know, terminate that and give it back to them and have the agreement redone.
I'm wondering if maybe a first step, Cal, might be to go ahead and contact the Khyber County and see if there's some permitting they need to do to change the use of that cul-de-sac from being a cul-de-sac turnaround to now being somewhat of a parking lot? And maybe let the county deliver the bad news if there's gonna be bad news.
You don't have one of those.
Cause they have with the boat parking.
And that was, that was excluded from the agreement.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
Yeah. It's the only thing.
I think maybe start with the county first and see where we wind up.
Wait a minute, you said it was already excluded?
The parking lot. Parking lot with the boats on.
Treat that the same, that turnaround should be treated the same as that.
But that's what we wanted to know.
The current agreement shows the cul-de-sac being a part of the agreement.
Yeah, what do we have to contact the county for? If we just, that's up to them, let them. Yeah.
Hold on, right now, aren't we in charge of their road, paving it? Yes, right now.
We've got limited responsibility on the paving.
Okay, and so the people who live on the cul-de-sac itself, they should have to have access to their home, and then we would have to pay for that too, right? That paving like right there, you know, like those people should be able to get to their driveway.
Where the circle is.
Yeah.
But so part of that circle is our responsibility as well.
Part of that circle is a road.
Yeah.
Right, it's a road to their home that we should that we're in charge of.
Because our sidewalks go up.
And if I were them, I wouldn't want to change that agreement at all. I mean, why would they want to?
Right.
Because that that means a portion of it.
Leave that up to them, let them make that decision if they want them to turn it in.
We don't have it.
And the question that came up early is is the striping that's in there.
Yeah.
And that's really, in my mind, that's more of a county judgment. They let the county go on the limb for that.
If that's the case, why don't we just take it over and tell them there is no striping?
Yeah, well, we don't lend them.
Well, that will.
We don't know and we just pay.
Trust me, that will create a problem larger.
I know.
You know, I mean, just tell them, you know, if we take it over, there's no striping.
They have a terrible.
Well, then if we don't take it over. Well, we weren't taking.
We already have the responsibility to pay their road. That's our responsibility, the road. The road, but that also includes parts of the circle.
The circle is part of the agreement.
Okay, so it's on us to do it. We're just waiting till prices come down, which probably isn't gonna be in the immediate future. No. So we need to look at, I think it was a hundred twenty-two grand, whatever it was, to repave that at some point. And we're gonna figure that out.
Let me ask you this. If if I'm going down Kay's Drive, you know, we striped the middle. Can I arbitrarily decide to paint horizontal?
No, no, I agree with you. No, I agree. I I'm the one, I agree.
Yeah.
I'm not saying do that. I think.
It's like altering.
I think they did it on their own.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, and that's the problem.
Yep.
Yeah, well, the 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 extra paving.
With no permit, by the way.
But many years ago, I think the little parking stalls were marked around the outside of the.
I just want to say.
It's been there for a while.
Yeah, it's been there, but is that was out on the was that on the original site plan? So originally, that was a turnaround only.
Right.
They went ahead and put the stripes in that are there now to turn it to there's parking around that west or the east side of the.
Because they didn't allow any more overnight parking on the main street.
That's right.
So they told the people, you have to park on the cul-de-sac.
Okay, so again, if we give it back to them.
Yeah.
And say, we're gonna exclude that from the paving, then then it's there. They can stripe it, pave it, do whatever they want with it. It's theirs.
But as long as it's we're doing the asphalt, there's no.
That's right. So we have to, we have to, you know, completely get that section out of the twenty fourteen agreement.
And I think we have to keep it because of the other condo people who live there.
It gets a little complicated because there is public access.
Yes, yes.
And I don't know if there's any obligations as far as maintaining safe fire access back there.
It sounds like the answer is the stripes have to go. That's what it sounds.
Well, they they can't restripe.
Right, and and there might be a county permitting process that they should have went through when they striped it in the first place. And I'm 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 suggesting that maybe we start with that county permitting process and inform the county of what's going on.
Yeah.
Let them say, no, you can't do that. You can't stripe that area. Or they make the judgment that, yes, you can.
How many people have two cars? How many people have three cars? And it's.
How many?
It's not on us.
Yeah, how many people use their garage as a storage area?
Yeah, but then you have that boat.
In a place where it is.
Parking, that's a parking.
Yeah, I know. A place where we do have or where the residents do have the ability to park on the street.
Yeah.
Is right here in Arch Coe on the north side of the property.
Yeah.
Where those were actually permitted as part of the. Yeah, well, when the original development, sorry, those were permitted.
Yeah, but this is the condo saying they don't want you parking there overnight. So they're telling you to go to the cul-de-sac.
You know, now that they have the boat lifts, maybe they could use the boat storage area.
It's trailer storage.
But let's go through the county first and let them.
Yeah, sounds good.
But meanwhile, it's a hold on the paving.
Right, right.
That it was a hold anyway.
Yeah, as I was saying, we told them they they did not do it and they're waiting.
Ready for your old business? Wait a minute, wait a minute. We still have a lawyer. Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, um. Now I'm near those. Um, but you did some stuff about ethics.
Yes.
What what do we need to know? Are you doing stuff about what's it about?
Well, the question was whether or not Mr. Jensen could participate in any vote matter involved.
Oh, that was the thing. Okay, alright. I thought that was after. Oh, and the other thing, um. The records request back then, because you you're doing a lot of review for Cal. Is it is it stuff that has to be read acted or something or, you know what I mean, as far as?
The request was made for me to see if I had any records that were qualified as public records.
Say that again?
The request was made in California, see if I have any records that were qualified as public records.
Oh, okay.
In my opinion, communications back and forth to any board members. So that it would be public records. Internal communications, in my opinion, are not. So there were a number of hours to go through it, using multiple search terms.
And the other thing is this, uh, all these changes that are going into the rules.
Yes, sir.
When are we gonna go through them page by page? When is that?
Uh, it'll probably be next month.
March eighteen.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully if you've gone through it beforehand.
I have already gone through the whole thing.
If you have any other additional comments, look for changes you think.
We went over it last month.
Yeah.
We didn't go over it page by page.
Before that. We started on this. That's where the change is taken.
Yeah, we had the workshop and then I made one series of changes and the board had some comments and I think I came back with the second check.
At the last meeting.
Last meeting, then I made additional changes between last meeting and today.
Right.
If there are further comments or additions, please, oh, yeah.
Was there something that you?
Do you want the final one early, Russ, before the next meeting?
Well, we have additional comments now.
Any comments? Any comments people would have now, we'd need to get to Tony.
No, Russ, say.
I mean. Or things I had questioned.
Okay, to the extent there are any on the edge of one task.
Like, well, you know, I mean, uh, I saw you, you changed one rule about changing a chair every year. Just because we kind of didn't do that one right. There was another one here about conflict of interest. And you took that all out.
That's governed by chapter one twelve of the Florida statutes. That's the Florida Commission on Ethics. And that references chapter one twelve. There's not need to be any rule that applies. And so what I'm doing was taking it and that statute changes to. So to make sure that the only ethics codes that are active that are applicable are the ones that are in chapter one twelve as a legislature mission from time to time. I don't.
Yeah, it just seems weird. I know, it just seems weird. And and then, because then the next thing is if a board member inadvertently votes. On a matter where you put it out, you know, before, you know what I mean, it's kind of. Yeah, no, it's still allowed. That's what I mean.
It's still allowed. What page is that?
Five, six.
What's section six?
Eighty-six. You know what I mean? No, that's it. I don't know, it just doesn't seem like it should be added. I mean, if you know it, like, me and the spray, you know, I mean, I told you right up front that.
What I will do is I will double check the statute because I think that may need to come out because again, just to avoid any conflict with state statute. It's an effective fact that the legislation would address that.
And and you took out all the rates for all the public information?
Right, all of them.
What did it change? Seven?
Oh, what is it proposing is statute charges, tells you how much to charge. So that that charge fifteen cents per page and twenty cents per page. That's in chapter one nineteen.
Do they ever, does it change here?
It hasn't changed yet, but it could change.
And it's under taking an hour.
Yeah. Testory language, which also talks about the extraordinary cost. And that's not in it. So I think it's one nineteen.
Okay, and there was another. One other thing that can surprise me with the new bills. Oh, utility bills? No, it said, uh. Mention of construction, district shall be notified in writing, correct, mention of construction and will make periodic inspections. Do you inspect the internal plumbing in these houses, in these warehouses?
What page is that?
Forty-one.
I I think that had to do more with the development per se.
Yeah.
Where we're gonna be taking over utilities.
And and page thirty-nine inspection. We do this, who pays for it? The district shall inspect the installation of all water distribution. Wastewater collection facilities installed by a property owner.
Yeah, that's been that's been there for years.
I know. And and in one of the.
And in one of the facilities, that's a point of connection.
Right, and in one of the. Yeah, and one of the schedules, uh, there's 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 so much just a beast for that. It's so much uh per foot of pipe and different things like that.
Yeah, it says which facilities are proposed to be transferred to district ownership, operation and control. So that would be a modifier and the type of facility would be inspected. So when a developer comes in, wants a new sewer force main and new distribution line.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with inside the house.
That's what I was reading.
Nothing inside. That's for the building official.
It's a key on like past the point of connection, point of delivery.
The only exception may be for a back uh back uh backwell prevention or something like that. Then we would have reserve that right to do an inspection side to make sure that they don't have any special hazards. Okay, really not do apple rule here, but in a hospital or something.
There's a certain amount where that.
All of our backhoes were on public property.
And and there was a lot in here about transferring EFCs and all that crap that we've been building since we were at law.
Yes.
And it's still the attorney affidavit. Didn't we do an owner affidavit before? Didn't we try and change that?
I think why didn't we? I'm just suggesting first up, David, it would just. Again, I think boards, your rumors, after David, I treated, I thought that was a wow. The board wants that to be the practice. We can change it to that.
Well, I just find it all the difference.
I think if it turns out to be, you know, nobody at home will absolutely, because our lessons is on a line to perform the necessary work. To make sure the title boards reflect any other issues.
Amendment, it didn't say anything. It talks about forms and applications, but we don't have any.
So I we need to create some.
We need, yeah, it didn't say anything here that we were gonna create.
Yeah, I think it's a.
For every type of situation, we should have a form. We we started to do.
The only reason I don't know if we need to say we're gonna create a form, I think it's good practice to do that.
Absolutely.
How do I make it so that, you know, that we do have, so when somebody asks you something, we've got, they're giving that just some vague.
I think the board could adopt a policy that implement the rules, direct the staff, ensure necessary forms to address application.
Yeah, but wouldn't it have to be a legal form or, you know, everything else? You'd have, I I don't think you'd have to go over it.
No, no, what what I'm saying is the board could tell, adopt a policy saying staff can prepare the forms necessary to implement these sections of the rule. So we come back to the board and the board say, yeah, we like it. There's enough info in there. These are templates, basically.
Right.
Uh, and the board could have an opportunity to look at those forms and add to or subtract.
Okay.
Yeah, most of them, we have forms. They're on the website.
And to the extent we don't, we will call through there and make sure we have prepared something. No, that's an idea. I mean, for example, bringing current application for transfers.
Yeah, I I I hadn't noticed. And I thought I went through the website. I didn't see any of those things.
They're under information and you just drag the cursor down and you'll, I think it's underwater sewer. There's uh the application for new service.
I'm talking about just transfers and those parts of all these steps at this point. Well, there's gonna be.
Yeah, I think that's what the board is saying. We need to do that. So I think that's what the board.
I'm just worried about the transfers. I'm not worried about all the stuff that's in place.
No, what we can do is when we come back with the rule here, we can add those forms. Won't be that we already have the templates from the past.
Right.
We could bring some examples and and recommendations just to what we would.
Because who knows what this guy's gonna want to transfer, you know what I mean, tear it down or whatever.
Might as well do it that as opposed to waiting for a month or a year.
Right.
Okay.
That'd be good.
So David, if you can take the lead on that, since you already took your stand.
Okay, okay. So before we're done, give me one, it's off the wall and not off the wall thing anyway. It still bugs me about uh the fire money, the pilt money that we that is designated for this area at Mocley and Everglades City and it all goes into the general fund. There's no way we could.
Countable?
Yeah, the county county general fund. There's no way we could like go after that money with jointly with Everglades City and Mocley. Is there any potential to do something like that?
I don't know. We can do it, but if I can get the documents associated with that.
The payment lieu of taxes.
Right.
Years they the county decided to put it in the general fund and then distribute it as they feel it should be distributed.
Now, this is a payment from the state?
Yes.
It's it's state owned property that they they don't pay property tax on, so they pay it in lieu of taxes.
And then we have to protect it.
That's your county commissioner.
Who has the agreement? They already told me they can't do anything about it. They were here when we asked them.
But it's the forty county commissioners that put it to the general fund.
But I guess the question is if I can have the agreement, yeah, they're called pilt generally, but who has?
It's a state agreement.
Right, do you know who has that agreement? I want to look for it.
Probably the county.
Okay, I know. I'm saying if anybody here has that agreement.
It's not Greater Naples Fire?
I know.
No, they get part of the pilt money.
They don't get it all. I I can ask your family for it.
You know, the budget department might have it.
Yeah, I'll ask for those guys. Mike, it's Mike Galski's back, probably. He knew that, right?
Is he?
Yeah, he moved back to the east coast. He's working for Christmas.
Is he crazy?
Never in the media.
Yeah, sorry. But the reason I want this is because we paid three times what everybody else pays just.
I'll find, I'll see, I'm trying to, well, we'll track, I'll track down.
Just curious.
See where it says.
Yeah, I know. We're trying to, we're trying to get one.
I think first of all, I'll talk to the boss.
It's so unfair.
At the first budget office or the internal office.
Yeah, because they keep track of where the money comes in, where it goes. So Everglades City and Mocley and us, we always.
Are you clear what you're being asked, Tony? Are you, you're clear what you're being asked?
Absolutely. To find out, okay, if we're improvising, what flexibility or opportunity there might be for the three entities that Russ mentioned, Mocley, Everglades City and District to have better uh input as to where that money goes as opposed to just being come from the general fund. Of county and county, can it be allocated more for specific areas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's all on the county.
Yeah, and it just. Right, I, whatever, but it uh every time that this man's asked to.
I know, exactly.
You got, you know, one of the reasons is that you're over budget in engineering and.
I know.
You know, my time.
This is a big couple of calls to find out can.
Twenty-one thousand dollars over budget right now between engineering and other.
I know, it's only money.
Sure, I'll get it.
Well, that's gotta be part of what that process is like. We've got money up. Take that into consideration instead of just putting down a thousand dollars upon each one.
I'll start, I'll start with the quicks off as the folks I know there. It's it's kind of like I was looking for the nineteen eighty-five agreement. We got all the daily weeks that within a few hours she sent me everything. Okay, moving away to ten.
Alright, so uh the utility meet the meeting with the county commissioner.
We have got an agreement with Mike Carr. Has he signed it, Tony?
I don't know. I've been out of office.
But it beats everything that you ask for. So then if Mike has sent over a signed contract, then we'll get with the.
Let me, you said something, Ray, about the what he's gonna say.
Three million bucks.
Where'd that come from?
The agreement, three million bucks. That's what he's gonna list it at. Came from him. And did he agree to a year or six months?
I think it came from the board, I think.
No, we never talked about that. I asked him about it and he wouldn't tell me.
And he he listed it three million because that's what he thought he was told to do.
No, we never mentioned the number.
I think originally, when he was first inquiring about it, that's where that number came up.
Yeah, but we never, I asked him.
You can still take uh offers, Russ. So that's just.
Yeah, but not more than that.
Yeah, I would ask.
That's the thing, not more than that, see? And I asked him specifically as I did land quest and they both did the dance. And I said, what are you gonna list it at? Because what I'm afraid of is he's got our V park two million dollars in his head. And you can always drop down to two million dollars and say, look what I've got for you. But where you, it's not where you started, it's where you went up to come.
I think Mike's thinking more residential.
I think what hurt us was that appraisal.
But appraisal means one man's opinion means nothing.
But we.
What about us, we appraised your house?
We got it and now it's out there.
But if the bank appraises your house in this market, your house could be worth a fortune more than the appraisal.
Yeah, but I understand. All I'm saying is that appraisal hurt us, I think.
It's what a bank would pay in his opinion. It's one opinion.
It's what I would pay for if I was gonna buy the land and it comes out to that number. I'm not gonna give you more.
Well, yeah, I mean, appraisal means nothing. It's just a guy. It's a guy.
I I think this is just an update and uh it's, the board has already given us authority or is the chair of the authority to sign on behalf of the district. And uh Mike's uh. And Mike's has listed it. I think Ray said that he saw it and. No, I heard it from you guys. Oh, okay. Yeah, he, he asked us what he's gonna list it for. I'm, some reason I thought it was three million. So we're moving forward.
Yeah, the meeting was the county commissioner.
Yes, I sent last night and I did make copies. Did we send?
Pass school.
We sent the room for.
No. There's meetings. Uh, yes, this is it. I'm sorry. And this is what I sent last night, but there was two meetings. Uh, one was a Zoom meeting with county staff, which was suggested by Commissioner Luc Castro that we meet with staff first. And this is a summary of that meeting and, you know, we were waiting to get some feedback from the county, but then we see that now all of a sudden I realized that. Oh, wow, we're meeting tomorrow. So that's why I'd send it out. But, but it was also presented at the meeting with Mr. Luc Castro. So it's, I don't think they have any problem with anything that was put in there. Uh, we're, that's a, a summary of what we had. It wasn't a lot of interest from the, they weren't sure of what their benefit was.
Right.
And, you know, they asked if wanted to give it to them or sell it to them and, of course, I said, sell it. You don't say we'll give it to you without, you know, the board saying when, where or the other. So anyhow, there's a lot of discussion back and forth. I think it was pretty, pretty solid. It, it was a good discussion. And then we met with Mr. Luc Castro and Supervisor Jensen joined us. It was also Tony and Dave and myself. And I, you wanna?
Yeah, I think it's important. We all wonder about this. And Rick had everybody who had anything to do with this in his office and on the phone with us. It was very thorough. And what we came away with was this. Did he say no? It's not up to him, first of all. Did they say no? No. Did they say yes? No. Um, however, what they did come up with was Commissioner Luc Castro said, well, I mean, have we ever looked at this facility? No. Well, it's been years. Yeah, we never looked at it. So he said, well, I want to look at from top to bottom. I want to know what these people's situation is. But the bottom line, uh, there are some bottom lines. Ron Benson was here at the last meeting. He said it best. Uh, he said that POI was never supposed to happen. When they originally developed it, it was never supposed to happen because it's right in the middle of an environmentally sensitive area. And because of that, the thing that changed it to allow developers to build it was the reuse of wastewater, oddly enough. They went along with that. Otherwise, there would be no POI. Having said that, and Ron Benson said this as well, if you want to live here, it's gonna cost you a lot more. And that's why. So now the county, um, they're gonna take a look at it. Uh, one of their rules that we don't comply to is we have to be hooked up to their system. That's not gonna happen. It's like fifteen or twenty miles of pipe. It's not gonna, so we're not hooked up to the system. At that point, I brought up, what about Everglades City? And oddly enough, it's in these notes from the twenty seventh meeting, but at the meeting on the tenth, they said, we're not going into Everglades City. We don't have anything to do with Everglades City. We're never gonna have anything to do with Everglades City. Because that is by itself, just like we are. And it was never about, um, we don't like the people at the plant. It was never about anything except the fact that it's getting too expensive. It's getting too big. Now, what they did say was your fees, your monthly fees could, not would, could triple. However, your non-alcoholic taxes would go down because that's how we do it now. In other words, you, your monthly water bill might go up, would go up, but your non-alcoholic taxes to pay for this would go down. However, before they consider taking it for free, they're not gonna buy it. Forget that. To take it for free, they said the plant's in excellent condition. They said financially, we're in excellent condition. And the first thing he said was usually, he didn't say it, one of these people said it. Usually when a, when a district wants to get rid of it, it's because it's sinking them financially. And they don't want to sink with us or with anybody. Um, they can help us with buying. They can help us, they hopefully save money. They can't really help us. We have a modern plant. The water plant's modern. The wastewater is not. Uh, but the bottom line is, in my own opinion, why think they gotta take it over in a, in a million years? And do they think, do I think they'll help us with it? Yes, I think they'll help us with it, but, um, if we want to live here, it's gonna cost more money. Oh, and one last thing. They knew about the water, the water main going from the plant over to the other side of the street needs at some point replacement. They know that the water main going out to the wellhead, a mile and a half out, at some point, it's gonna need replacement. They know that's two or three million dollars. Lift stations, they know, are thirty years old. They're gonna need replacement. That's all in here. And they wouldn't even consider taking the keys for infringement unless all those things were brought up to date, which is not a reason. So that's where they were. They're gonna come look at it. They're gonna check it out. Because we're out here by ourselves, the only like we ever have to stand on is if they do go in and take over Everglades City, then we have an argument. But they assured me they're not gonna do that. In fact, Luc Castro did too. He said, Ray, forget, we're not going to Everglades City.
So am I hearing even to them for nothing?
Yeah.
To all the capital improvements that are needed in that area?
Yeah.
And it's still gonna cost them what it costs us to run it.
Right.
Where are we saying?
It's spread over the whole county. It is spread over the whole county.
Fire district never give that.
Fire district's not county separate. No, the, the costs, what they're talking, they were talking about, Ray, was it would set us up as a sub-district. Right. And we would, we would have our own particular rate here. Right.
Yeah, which is the fire district. We pay a four percent compared to higher cash paying one point five.
As far as, you're right. But as far, do we have to bring it up to date either way? Yes. And that's a big expense. Are they gonna do it? No. Would they help us with it? Not financially. They, they may help us with it, but what they would do is do a special assessment. Right. You, if they did the construction and everything else, you pay a special assessment to them. Or we could do it and bring it up to some, we still, we're still turning over. Right.
Which is a special assessment.
So moving forward, if they took it over ten years from now, something went wrong, it'd be on there, is the bottom line. Number, number nine on here is still very interesting though too. Because we would be saddled with handling, paying into their regional system, replacement, rehab that would be needed. So we would not be exempt from things there. Right, because it's spread over the whole county. So.
Yeah.
That's right. That's a no, no deal there. Yeah, we, we looked at, try to interconnect. We would be responsible for building that pump station to their system plus any upgrades.
That would, that would make it happen. Too far away.
Well, no, that's, I don't think that he means just the connection. I think it, uh, for any, to pay for any necessary in connection, in the county type, just with us.
Right.
Right. And you know, there, I guess there could be an essential impact fees if we have to pay the county. They're, they're playing capacity and so forth like that. If they intend to take us, take the plant completely away from. The difference is, yeah, the whole county may think, but you're right. It's, it's not gonna happen, in my opinion. I wanted to go to the meeting. I think one of us should go to every meeting. I really do. Um, and I can tell you, they were all there. They were loaded and prepared. They didn't say no, Luc Castro, of course, uh, but he didn't really push for us to take it over, them to take it over. He just said, you know, what do the experts say? They were all there and they said, why wouldn't we do that? So it's ours.
Well, if, if I were to ask you right now, uh, for a reason why the county would want it, do you have one?
To help us out, and that's what Luc Castro said, we're, we're still taxpayers and they're growing and they have the buying power. And if, what they said was, if there was a break even, even, which it would be, they still wouldn't want it, okay? Because the water and sewer is separate. It's like its own business.
It is. It's an enterprise fund.
Honestly, it, I mean, I don't, I didn't, I never thought we were doing them a favor. I thought we're begging them. If that's what I was doing, we're not doing them a favor. We got an anchor here. I was looking for help with. And some of the other systems they have taken over, they've got here, they got the ability to interconnect with them. I got.
The locations.
Yeah, right. They took over, uh, Bloomgate City.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, very easy to interconnect. They put it together. Plus, it's got a potential customer increase in the, so they got the ability.
It increases the base, right? We have no.
Same with the Darth East Regional Plant.
But I think the big thing now they're really facing that they're gonna have to do eventually is build the eight estates.
Yeah.
And they're doing that one.
Yeah, they're doing it.
It's eighty two hundred and twelve thousand, twenty billion, a million.
Right.
That's not the East area.
They have their.
Darth East area.
Now, their staff members said that a lot of times they'll look at it if they can improve the operation.
Right.
And they said, you know, they take it a cursory review and they think that the plant's being run perfectly.
Yeah, they did. And it's in here. One last thing. The word asbestos cement pipe has been flying around. Just so you know, the pipes are concrete. The asbestos goes around the outside of, it's a wrap. Is it gonna get into drinking water? No. Did it? No. Okay, so the asbestos is an outside lining. That, that, that. Well, actually, to correct it a little bit, the asbestos cement pipe is a mixture of the cement and asbestos fibers and so forth, but it's encapsulated. It does not break loose. It does not come loose. Right. It, it, one of the parameters that we're, the drinking water success bar is asbestos along with a multitude of both chemicals on a regular basis. And it's usually, it's not an issue. It's only when that asbestos becomes friable, that it can enter your lungs, does it ever become an issue? You can drink it and it just goes out through your body. You just can't smoke it. Yeah, you don't want any of your lungs. You don't want any of your lungs.
Well, and the, that's the feed pipe from the wells. What after, so it's treated. And then after it's treated, that's what the people are drinking. And then the other pipe is already treated. The other pipe is not a factory asbestos.
Okay, we may have a stretch on Union Road that is, they see pipes. Yeah, but again, it, it's something that's monitored. It's something that, till you break it and it becomes in the air, is it a concern?
I appreciate you guys going to that meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
I have, the county has contact to be about sending her out here to do a more detailed inspection of the facilities. Is that something you wanna? Yeah. Free as far as their time, but Mitch and I are both gonna probably have to be there on that day. So there'll be some costs there. And again, do you want us to proceed with that? And if so.
My first thought is thinking like Southern Trent, would it hurt us to get another opinion?
No. We'll go ahead. Mitch was looking about the first week of March before he's done.
Yeah.
The, the.
What is everybody else's thing?
I don't think that somebody else looked at it. Well, okay, good. We'll proceed then. Okay, Camber.
Yeah.
Russ.
The, the, the other thing that was, was good was Mr. Jensen's participation was good. And he had recommended that maybe on different projects, a board member would like to do like what he did. I, I think that's effective, especially if you're dealing with elective officials. Uh, staff on staff, you know, we all.
Yes.
Speak the same language, but politicians, politicians are, you know, more elected and elected as politicians.
Yeah.
Dirty words, but, but I, it's effective. And I could just see the respect that Mr. Luc Castro had with, with Ray. I, I think that that, that was a good call that we did and had him participate. And I think in future meetings like that, it'd be a good call. So, yeah, Camber, no.
Yeah.
And it's, it's all a learning experience.
Okay, so now on to new business. Any new business?
What?
Yep. That means our meetings are getting shorter. All right, are there any supervisor requests or comments?
Yes, our market code lights are still not clean.
They're what?
Not clean. The light posts. We talked about it.
Oh.
Do we own them or the FPL or something?
Uh, oh, FPL owns them, but we could certainly clean them. I, I, I hope I didn't forget. LCs, yeah.
LCs.
But you run them from them.
And Cal, one other thing that's on that, potato sign, the real dirt owns the dormitory building that's selling. It's all smashed. And I gave you a picture of it a couple of months ago, but it's on land that's not part of the tract that they are selling. And I don't know if it's Orkin Coke that owns that piece or if it's the hotel that owned that piece, but it shouldn't be there. And it's all broken up and it doesn't look good. Everybody going in and out of the gun range, you know, it looks yearly. So if they could just get rid of that sign, okay. It's right where you come in, when you come in before the T, it's right there on the right. It's all smashed.
Did that dormitory sell?
No, it was, it was under contract. Somebody, somebody was holding it. And then it caved again now. And the last thing I heard was he was talking about having earthworks tear down the building, which is a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, and that was supposed to be done already, but it hasn't happened yet.
I'm probably so busy, so, okay. What was I?
You just, you stop with Michelle. Say, I'm in. Ray already come in.
Russ, no. I don't have any. Okay. Are there any audience comments? Come up to Mike.
Hi, my name is.
Yeah.
It should be on.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
My name is Linda from the seven hundred and forty two Port Drive. And it seems like every category that was spoken about today is needing, came up about finances and funding. And I'm a little upset that we're spending twenty eight thousand dollars, as we said here.
Yeah.
On this piece of land for maintenance. And I don't know if anyone else serves that way, but I would think that there'd be a way that we could lower those costs. I don't know how, but I'm not an expert at it, but I would like to, I was wondering.
But the.
The media.
Four, eight.
Yeah, I don't know how long a piece of property that is, but it's all is small and twenty eight thousand dollars is a lot of money every single year.
I think when we start our budget process and we review these contracts, I think that's one of the things that'll probably come up. What we are paying and should it remain that way? Should we go out the bid again? I myself don't know how I could do a comparative, whether it is too high or, I don't know.
That area has been expensive for maintenance and it's not just the regular maintenance agreement, but you had flooding, you had that clean out white site. It's, uh, there's been a lot of irony.
But I think what she's saying, in the contract, I looked it up, and just the maintenance there is twenty eight. So anything else flooding or whatever, that's not under the maintenance, I don't think.
Yeah, I think the, Tony's gonna look at, or gonna figure out, we're gonna figure out how that agreement was ever signed. And is there a, is there, is there an option to get out of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I personally agree with what the, you know, it.
I think there's always an option.
My, it, it's nice to have there. It looks nice.
Yeah.
But gee, twenty eight thousand is a lot of money. If you, you know, ten years, that's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That doesn't include anything else, you know, that goes with it. If the, the sprinkler system goes out, that's a lot, just a lot of money.
Yes, but the other thing to consider is if the state says, you know, it's our land.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We've gotta find, we've gotta find out whether there's a, there's an out.
Right.
There's a lot of properties on forty one who pays for all that. There's a lot of properties on 41 who pays for all that.
Yeah, and Cowherd who pays for that.
Yeah, who pays for all that.
It's beautiful.
The higher county has.
Paid by higher county.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of the county.
Go ahead and get the county. I'm afraid this, pop the call counting them, take it over, say, hey.
They can't, it's state ground.
That's right.
They should use help money to do it.
Thank you.
Do that. Four years of following out of the college march, 41, second one, forty.
Yeah.
Higher county maintains it for a contract with the DOT, so you got.
The same thing where, yeah.
Because it's like, you know, up there, it's on US 41, which is.
Yeah, but if that's state grounds, and pilfered state money that we're not getting to maintain state grounds.
My guess is there's probably two types of intermodal agreements, that, well, obviously, the DOT and the higher county, one is for regular mowing of the medians and so forth, that that may be something state pays the county to do. But the special landscaping, like the, uh, the palm trees and all that type of thing, that's probably being maintained by higher county. If there are costs, because that's something that higher county did special just like here.
We can always contact the purchasing department, find out, I can, I'll do that.
I need to wait, but I think what we have to ask ourselves is, what will it look like without?
Yeah, but all we're saying is, what can we do to keep it that way without us paying?
Oh, absolutely, I'm all over that, but what will it look like when it's just grass?
Yeah, just like roadway.
More than impressive, just say it looked like a roadway, any other place.
Yeah.
It looked like Ten Thousand Islands.
Yeah, that's right.
Or when it floods, all the land's going to this time. Okay, I'll look that up, I'm curious.
More audience comments?
Recently, I've been working on getting these, um, public records, and I know you guys are saying you're spending a lot of money giving and so forth. And basically, where this started out is, back before I bought that property over there, I started asking for, uh, questions to be asked.
Could you give your name for the records? Well, I know, but the speaker.
Steve McNamie. So anyway, um, I've asked over the last six to eight months, sixty-eight times, to go into the district office to look at readily available, um, records, meaning like your ROP, that's all your minutes of here, you know, supposed to be in a book. First thing I can do is go in there, and I can go through this book, and I can look at, okay, back in eighty-nine, you had a meeting on this, can I pull those records? Doesn't cost anybody anything, um, looking at these, these records, there shouldn't be any, and those to be redacted, there should be no interest in why I'm looking through that. Okay, I have not been denied every time to go in there.
That's not true.
Well, you say, wait, wait, you say something about they're supposed to be all together, where does that come from?
ROP?
Yeah, the minutes that they.
ROP is.
Well, when she's saying, who says they're all supposed to be together?
Yeah, does it have to be like? There's nothing that says how we store the records have to be done a certain way, is there?
Well, we have them electronically, and we'll send you every one you want.
But here again, how can I know what to request until I've seen what's in the ROP?
Every record proceeding since time began, we'll send you every one.
Request the whole thing.
Okay, I've done that, I've gotten a lot, but why am I not legally able to walk into that office and look at readily available property? Because that's the law, folks.
I believe the attorney responded to that.
Once again, we did advise that you aren't legally, you have normal business hours, and the district staff would need to be there to ensure that integrity is maintained, so it may require extensive supervisor careful precautions.
Yes.
I know what we indicated before, you're not being prohibited, so.
No, it's, it's not for time.
I got emails here over and over, no, we cannot give you access, you haven't given us enough, uh, enough time. I've got one here back in July.
Is it time or enough?
I only get five minutes.
Well, I think some of the stuff too.
You can go.
Get, get, you know where.
Yeah. You can talk, you don't, you don't, no time, you can talk.
So, over and over, and I've gotten, and I've gotten the emails back and forth, no, you can't come in there, no, that's not gonna be possible, and, and, and so forth, right? I've got the email.
You set an appointment.
Huh?
Set an appointment.
Okay.
Let's know, we have to have somebody there that's gonna watch, no, you have.
Well, have a.
No.
All these, okay.
You.
Depositions.
I would love that.
Okay, one other question before I'm done here being, obviously, you want this to go to court.
I really don't like the threat.
Okay.
We don't like the threat at all.
You won't get a threat.
That is a threat, so let me just answer this for you. From what I'm hearing, are you entitled to that? Absolutely. Premier management is a business. If you make an appointment, and I don't know how you're doing it, but if you call them in the morning, say, I'm gonna be there in ten minutes, if that's what you're doing, that doesn't fly. If you call a few days ahead, when can I make an appointment? Then you are absolutely, a hundred percent within your rights.
I've got, I've written back, it's been fifteen days since I asked for this.
So what's that?
I, I don't, I've seen a request, asking that, but give us, send it to us, we'll have, we've gotta have a wrench, have somebody there.
Absolutely.
Let me just read a second of the statement. Every person who is custodian of public records shall permit the record to be inspected and copied by any person desiring to do so at any reasonable time, reasonable position, and under supervision by the custodian of public records. This starts off, the whole concept of, I need to maintain the integrity. Uh, I have not seen any reasonable public records requested, by the way, Mr. McNamie, this is the record you're referring to, where I told you needed an attorney, I'd like to be disciplined with the record. Here's the rebate of the circle, because I don't know the date of this reading, but it says, District Manager clarified that Mr. McNamie has not stated what records he is looking for specifically, just that he wants access to all the records. It was also stated that Mr. McNamie's attorney could contact the office and state what records they would like to have access to. Once that is received, the district's attorney will review the records and release access once they have been vetted. It was stated that a charge could be assessed for time involved by the staff who reviewed the record. Reason I'm re-reading that, it's Mr. McNamie has asserted with no kind of answer for them. A record of that, where I told him that he needed an attorney to get public records. I've never told anybody that, that's what I know. This does not say that, and my recollection is, is Mr. McNamie says, I have contacted an attorney. I believe my recollection, like, if an attorney had them contact us, or go back and look at the record, this does not say that I, this is his proof, this is why I have Mr. McNamie come in. That doesn't say I told you that you had to get an attorney to cover it, just for record. But anyways, Cal, Mr. McNamie's making the request now, you have somebody there, are you off to hoop and money, or is that a holiday?
Make it a quick.
Have this discussion.
I've got a, a course that's available, I don't know what they're, are you dealing with COVID? Everybody isn't in the office every day?
I mean, that's another interesting point, because of COVID, higher counties' public records requests used to be, or recognize the extraordinary nature of it, I used to be able to go down to the records room, my son, and now I'm no more, and I understand that, and that's, so you make the public records requests, and they didn't provide them. But if it's possible to have the staffing.
I think we're just thinking, how can we make this happen?
Yeah.
What, you know, what's going wrong in the communication?
When I first came in here, I remember one time mentioning I'm being stonewalled that I couldn't get in here, probably all remember that? And, and, and Mr. Pierce told Cal, why don't you make an appointment with him, come to your office this afternoon, to see those records? He said the same thing, well, there's COVID, I gotta get people in line, I gotta do this, I gotta do all that. After that period of time, I still requested, when can I get to your office? Never happens.
And that's what you asked fifteen days ago?
That's one of them, yes.
You just said, why should I come in, and you haven't gotten a reply?
I said, oh, one of the replies, or I wrote, Cal, I am still waiting to hear when I may have access to the public records. I don't want to put this request into writing, as it will become a public record. It has been fifteen days since I requested to come to your office. And it works the gray area.
What's that?
No.
I, I, no, it's an email, I'm sure, with all the board members.
So how do we make him an appointment? That's what he's asking. You want to see the records proceeding, just write in specifically what you want.
Yeah, but that is specifically, are you saying what you want? I mean, if you, you came to me with all my background, where is it? How do I get it, how do I have it here ready for you?
Well, he just said he wants to see all the minutes.
A lot of them are electronic, and some of them are offsite, so we've gotta be able to bring them and to have them there. How many years back do you want to see?
That isn't the point.
Well, it is, it is, because there's a lot.
No, you don't.
I do.
You keep saying too about how, um, Joe and I have destroyed our, you know, our reputation here and so forth. Can you answer this question?
Who said that?
Just let me finish. Can you answer me this question? When they were looking at buying or putting money down on this five acres, to put it into a park, did you have conversations with JC that the CID was possibly, or more than likely, gonna sell them the east side of the property to pay for the west side of the property? Never happened?
No.
Okay. You got about eight witnesses that heard the story straight from JC's mouth, and that's why we didn't go through with that sale, because he came to us and he said, look. He, he pulled up in his boat, and he said, and I have to be at Joe's dock that day, and he said, Joe, I need you to build me a building. Where? On that east side property, that east side property's not for sale, the CIA is gonna put it into a park. No, I was told by the second in command, what he said, that.
Let me finish, let me finish.
Will you let me finish, and then I'll bring that to you?
Okay, go ahead.
So, we, that's when we said, wait a minute now, so now they're making side deals that they're gonna sell that property, flip that property to pay for the west side. The man sat there with us, there was six of, eight of us people standing there, and we said, are you absolutely sure? We never asked who was in the second in command. But then when I, that, and, and then, um, after I sold him this property, you guys spent thousands of dollars researching on a plan that was never even proposed, that, um, I have to say again, see again, who exactly told you that? Who's the second in command that you told me about? And he said Sam Sheer. Wait a minute now, I said, I told, what was it, I supposedly told JC? That you were giving him, um, I got it down, but that you were going to more than likely be able to sell him that east side property to build, um, I think he was talking about a restaurant, and you are gonna use the money from the east side property to pay for the west side property. That I can say with unequivocal, no. Never talked about making any deal on the west and east. The only thing I ever told JC was back in the day, when it, when you guys, when you guys came here and wanted us to spend, yeah, ten thousand dollars or whatever, and five hundred thousand to buy all of it.
Yeah.
And the five hundred thousand to buy all of it, I said that, 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 that property was available, and that, I said, I, I think my exact words were, I'm definitely not in favor of a five hundred thousand dollar dog park, because that's what it was originally going to be. They wanted to buy it for a dog park, and I said, no, I'm not spending five hundred thousand for a dog park. I never discussed, he told me at the time that he was interested in that property, and his interest was a, putting a restaurant down there and all the other stuff. Well, I said, well, you know, you gotta make a deal on it yourself, I, you know, we're not making any deal on it, we don't own it. I said that we don't own it, but never did I say you could put one against the other, no. So basically, then you're saying that what he's telling me is a lie? I don't, I have no idea. And my answer is, I have no idea what he told you, therefore, I, I, I'm not privy to that, so I can't answer that question for you. I can tell you what I told him.
You were gonna buy it, and by the next month, it was given to somebody else.
Do you know, but the reason was because of this exact conversation, and it.
What reason was, there was a deal, and all of a sudden it disappeared?
I mean, this, nobody can come in here and tell you why that offer was, was taken back, but because.
Wasn't taken back, you bought it. You take offers like that.
You guys were gonna put the ten thousand dollars down on it. Yeah, well, before that happened, JC came to us and told us that a board member was going to sell him that east side property.
He can't sell it.
I don't care, he can't. It has to do with what the man told us.
Steve, listen.
That's the interview.
Wait a minute, listen, listen, listen. We sat here for hours, because Joe Levy came in and jammed us. He stands right there, and he said, there's gonna be housing for the, there's gonna be all kinds of things, a pig farm, he put on the hard press, okay, and if you don't do this, it's gone. First question I asked, have you got skin in that game? No. Do you have a deposit on the property? No, and he didn't, he didn't own it, he had nothing, but he thought he had right of refusal for another forty days. He had no right of refusal, it was ending that night. I had him call Dwin, and Dwin said, you're done tonight, but it didn't matter, he had no money on it. So he jammed the hell out of us, we stayed for hours. What do we got, we don't want that damn, we don't have the money for the land. Hold on, the ten grand was the cheapest way we could get out of it. He was gonna pay it, we were gonna guarantee reimbursement, so to buy us two months to July first, ring a bell? So that we could decide, are we gonna do this or not? But I'm gonna tell you right now, the answer was gonna be, no. And I don't know, I, to this day, I can't tell you why, Joe was slamming it so hard. I asked him point blank, are you sure you don't have money in this thing? No, I don't, and he didn't, okay? Now just listen to this, I know a little something about this. He was supposed to go to Dwin's office and give him a personal check that we requested to keep the deal in contract for the ten grand. He never did, know why? He was picking up his boat. He sent Ronnie in, and Ronnie gave her one of his checks for ten thousand bucks. Totally illegal, wouldn't have kept it in contract, Ronnie's an agent in the same office, no good. Then, on Monday, oh, seriously, who's Steve McNamie? And you put ten grand down, and then you closed on it July first, the rest of it is BS, it's hearsay. You gotta learn not to listen to the coconut telegram. And it didn't hurt you, you made out real well, and good for you, good for you. And it wouldn't have been the east side, Steve, it wouldn't, we're not your enemy, it would have never been the east side.
I, I never had any conversation about left side paid for the east side. The only conversation I had with him was he told he, what he would like to do in that area, and I told him he would have to buy it, I said, that's it.
He can't sell it.
I, I had nothing to do with it.
And seriously, Steve, if you bring Levy in here, I'll ask him, I'll say, do you remember the day you put the full court press on us, and none of us could figure out why? And he really didn't have any money, he didn't have a deposit, nothing, and they gave him like, he, he didn't even know when his, when his due diligence was over.
Yeah.
He had no idea, he thought he had another forty days, he stole everybody in the room. He called Dwin, standing right there. He got bad information, but at the end of the day, he didn't have a dime on that land, good for him, he had due diligence. He had due diligence, so that night at midnight, that wasn't squeezing him either, we don't know to this day, he came to us and lying, he jammed us, and to this day, we can't believe you bought it two days later. We don't know, I don't blame you, but the land has been for sale for ten years.
But we do know what he told us that day, and that is why I fought for it, because I thought it was awesome that you guys wanted to protect the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I had to fight this one, we're not in the land business, had to fight this one, not in the land business.
Absolutely.
Had to call him because he left, and I was, I was pretty sure he would vote to do it, and I'm really glad that we agreed. It took us a long time, but that we agreed to do it, because that's why we're here.
But we didn't have the money. We didn't have the money to buy it.
We had the ten to at least buy the time.
Right, that's all it was, it wasn't the deposit. It was the reimburse.
It was never ours.
If you ask Joe, and I'll ask him right in front of you, it was to reimburse him for cutting the check. We guaranteed him that if you give us till July first to do our due diligence, two months, and we guarantee you're going to walk away whole. You're not going to lose ten grand that he was putting down that afternoon. So, it's, she's right, it's all had to do with timing, and it was never, we didn't know who the hell you were, it was nothing to do with it, then all of a sudden, boom, this guy bought it. Wow. And he came to say, right, wow, great, I'm going to tell you what, I can't speak for you, was there anybody in this room that didn't go, Jesus? I did, we didn't want it, we never wanted it. And we don't have the money, but I think, Steve, let's, I'm going to tell you, when I found out J C bought the land, I mean, Jesus, that was nice, okay? You flipped it in six months, made a hundred grand, that's fantastic. You may remember, you were sitting right there, and you said, well, I could solve this, say, kind of like, I said, are you out of your mind? Before you could shovel one in the dirt, you could walk away with a hundred grand? Just do it. And at the time, your answer to me was, I don't want a gas station in there, I care about my neighbors, you know, and I'm like, Jesus, that's pretty good. Yeah.
Because I'm listening to this, B S.
Well, come here.
I'm here.
Okay, do you remember the afternoon when you slammed us, you said, you've got to buy that land, you remember that?
I said, we were done with the offer, let me finish, you have a question?
I didn't say anything.
All I listened to on this is everybody interrupting everybody here, it's unbelievable.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll give my five minutes. What happened was, I spoke, we purchased this lot.
Right.
And then we found out about the, the E R Cs and stuff like that, and I said, for me, it's not a great deal. I wanted to do what I wanted to do it, and I couldn't do it. I, I, there was plant factories that were able to be done, a whole bunch of stuff, but I wanted to do storage, and that wasn't good. So I said, this was a great deal on this lot. So I said to Russ, I said, Russ, I think that you guys at the C I D would buy this lot, it's a fabulous deal.
Right.
It's, lots are being sold, a ten thousand square feet for six hundred thousand dollars. This is two acres, and it's being sold for five hundred thousand, and it'd be great for the community, it's our entrance, okay? I came and we said, all the meeting's going to be in two weeks, and I came in, so by the time the meeting came, it was over, I might, might think. I did put a ten thousand dollar deposit, which was cashed, and Steve reimbursed me, okay?
That day.
That was when I put it in, because I was waiting for the meeting, because I wanted you guys to put it out, and what did you say to me? Why don't you pay for the five hundred thousand out of my pocket? I go, I look at you like you're crazy, why would I pay five hundred thousand and give, and, and give you a loan of the C I D? For what? What am I going to win out of this?
Let me ask you a question.
Go ahead.
You did say all of that, but when you were here, you were right there, and we can't to this day figure out why you were pushing so hard for us to buy you, which we can't figure it out, not for us.
You're no better than anybody, you're supposed to be a real estate agent.
We don't have any money.
You, you had the money, you don't have to say, you had a million dollars here, you had the money.
You all checked out of the car. You can't.
No, I never said that. And then you asked me to finance it for you guys, which I said, why would I do that? So the reason I came here was, and I was pushing because it was a great bloody deal.
Not for us.
For the whole community, not for you.
But we couldn't afford it, the community couldn't afford it.
That's not true, okay?
It's totally true.
In the general fund, you had so many million dollars, you had the money to do it.
You hear that?
And that's what we were saying, okay? And then.
We were being precision.
Done deal, it was a done deal, you guys were going to take it.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, but wait, when he left.
When he left, you're putting down the ten thousand, she was investigating.
You were going to reimburse me, okay? With a job.
You were going to reimburse me.
That's right.
I didn't know you had a cap.
Yeah, so you were going to reimburse it, we had special meetings without you commenting every two seconds.
Saying that's right, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, just be quiet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, then we had special meetings at the park to discuss with all the community members what we wanted to do, and everybody was for it. It was a great thing, you guys were looking like heroes, you had the lot.
Who'd we?
The meeting you had was only with Russ, because we cannot support the group.
Russ to come there, you guys asked Russ to do a special meeting.
No.
No, we didn't.
We never did.
Did they ask you to do a special meeting?
No, I can't, I, I meant to say I would meet with them.
They had, okay? And everybody was there, they had concerns, we discussed it, and everything was good, and everybody was happy that it was going to happen to our entrance, okay? So that's when, after you guys, I gave up the deposit, everything was good, and then I'm standing at the dock, okay? And this guy, J R, I'm building his friend's house, pulls over.
J C.
J C, and says, hey, do you want to build me a building? And I said, where are you buying a building? What kind of building? He says, I'm buying the lot in the front. And I go, you're buying the lot in the front? I go, how the hell are you buying the lot in the front? We have a signed contract, I didn't say that, I just wanted to hear what he had to say. He goes, one of the, one of the board members here is offering me to buy the lot, I'll sell you that lot, and with that money, what I was, I understood after, that the money that we're going to sell in that half of the lot, they were going to pay for the whole lot. I said, what the hell? We're giving you guys a great opportunity, we made the deal for five hundred thousand, they were asking seven, eight, either we did go back and forth, and we did it, you guys could have done it. He's a real estate agent, the listing was in his office, he never thought about it, we did all this, and then what happened? Then what happens? We're finding out we're getting swindled on the back, we don't need you to make money, we could buy the lot, sell half the lot, and which is exactly what he did.
I just asked one thing.
Sure.
That was hearsay, why did you not even ask Russ if that were true?
None of that's true. Came from the horse's mouth.
Which horse's mouth?
J, J C, why would he come up and tell us that? How did he have all this inside information?
He actually had to buy the land.
How did he have all this inside information?
That's the first I heard of him, when he bought the land.
Yeah, exactly. But you know what? Developers are not responsible to come into this board and explain everything that they're doing on their own private property.
When he said, just like Ray said.
Steve just made a hundred thousand dollars on that property because he said it, and he sat here and he said, he sold it to Brian Jones, he put it on the next door, and he sold it to Brian Jones, and he kept saying Brian Jones and Brian Jones.
I didn't say you sold it to him.
You.
I showed him the minute.
Go back and watch the meetings.
Here's the thing, you've got to listen.
No, you're always in the conversation with him.
Would like to speak, there's still some people out here.
That's why you're accusing me and I.
Now, I think there's odd signs here.
I, because my media, I'm a German, I think they're over the path.
Yeah.
Men, I would suggest that Steve McNamee, Mr. Levy, you have your five minutes, I think there's more registered speakers, and I would suggest that for decorum purposes, for the board's interaction, a lot of people have their five minutes, and if there are any questions, have a discussion among the board.
Okay.
That's what I would suggest, if it occurs, maintain the decorum.
Okay.
Okay.
So who is the next audience?
There's a lady back here.
I'll withdraw my question.
Okay.
It wasn't very good.
Frank Lee has to speak, he's online.
Yeah, Mr. Lee.
Right.
He left.
He le, uh, okay. Did you, is there anyone else online that would like to speak? Okay, I, nobody's identified that, so I think we're set.
Okay. So the next name would be a German, but your suggestion was that we as a board.
If you want to have discussion on what you can refer.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah.
I, I don't like cutting people off.
I don't either.
I really don't.
Well, okay.
Okay.
I can just provide advice, the board can do what they want to provide advice, but I think the board has a policy of five minutes per speaker. Frank, what's helpful, at the stand, what are the decorum practices, to let the person speak for the five minutes? And then if there are any questions that a board member has, or comments a board member's wish to make amongst the board, then they can make that, as opposed to having a debate back and forth, there you're throughout, multiple people jumping in, I just think, again.
Okay, well, I, one thing I'd like to say, from what I'm hearing and being part of on the board when all this happened, is I'm hearing one person told another person. Now, everybody was privy to that information, and we all had our own conclusions about what happened, and I think we have to listen to each other and understand, communication failed somewhere.
Right.
And I think we need to move on, and that, that's just how I feel, what do you feel?
Um, we never ever owned the property, we never got the opportunity to pay the ten thousand dollars. And I really do appreciate you giving us the offer too, and then all of a sudden, we didn't get the chance, so I don't know where the breakdown, breakdown happened, and now I understand the whole hearsay conversation, but I'm glad that it worked out for you, Steve.
Well.
And I appreciate, Joe, your contribution to our community, I really do, you guys have done so many good things, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What's bothering me still is, at the last meeting, Frank was sitting in the back, or Ray goes back to him and tells him, did you know Steve was going to put a gas station on that land?
No, I never did that.
Yeah, but again, this is not what this is about.
No, but there you go again.
Wait, wait, Ray, Ray?
Yeah, I can't.
Sam, do you have anything to say?
Me neither.
Ray, Ray, hold on, Sam, you have anything to say?
Uh, I never told J C that we would sell him the land, never.
Is that not what he told you?
Exactly.
I'm, I'm, I'm just tell.
All right, but it's hearsay, that's what I'm saying.
Let me tell you what I told J C, all right? That, which was all public record at the time, that we quit, that we did, we were going to put the ten thousand dollars down to back up Joe so that the property didn't go away.
Right.
So, we were willing to do that. Now, that, and you guys were going to buy the property, and, and he said, well, I'd like to, you know, was thinking about buying the property, and I said, well, we don't own it. He goes, well, if you guys own it, then, you know, I'll be willing to make you a deal on the property. I said, we don't own it. So, that's where, that's where that is.
Communication again, right?
And I, number, number two, I'm not second in command.
J C was here at this meeting, we had the discussion between us guys here, how did he find out about all this stuff?
But what he told you, I, I'm not privy to where he heard it or where it came from, but it's hearsay, it's what he told you, it doesn't mean it happened here.
Joe, there was a roomful of people, anybody could have told him.
Yeah.
Exactly, anybody.
Not, not the, not the details that he came into.
All right, we're not going to just.
The ten thousand dollars, that was it.
Yeah.
That was a matter of public record, he had done that at the meeting.
And for the record, financially, I've already said it, no, we could not afford that parcel.
Public record, and then, when I'm listening to this on the internet, I never put up the money. You guys don't have public record.
I, I.
I put up the money, I signed the contract, I wasn't.
Okay, it's more, there's more.
You were definitely.
Ray, what, what do you have to say, just about the issue?
You get the lot, it's a fantastic deal, and you were going to let it slip, and that's why.
No, let, let's not fingerpoint, let him say what he has to say.
Don't ask me, ask anybody here, aside from me. We, we had no idea what you were talking about, the land had been for sale a million years. You didn't know, admittedly, that your due diligence was up that night, you thought you had another thirty days. I said, call Dwin, in fact, I got Dwin on the phone. And you found out, but I said, it didn't matter, because you told us that you didn't have any money on it, you were doing your due diligence at that moment, okay? You really were, you believed it's a good thing, you believed it's a great entry, you believed it was better than anything else going in, you did it. Nobody's saying you didn't, but we're looking at it like, where's this coming from? All you got to do is pay five hundred thousand dollars, there's no five hundred thousand dollars. What I want you to understand is, and I just said it today, before you guys even spoke, there's no money, okay? The general fund isn't playing money, there's no money, and we would have had to borrow the money to do it, all of it, five hundred grand, and we didn't know how we were going to get it, but you kept pushing and pushing because you believed in it, you kept pushing. So from where you're sitting, it's a great deal, you were looking at it, but from where we're sitting, how are you, how in hell are we going to do this? We thought the park was a good idea, we thought the open stage is a good idea, but we had absolutely no way of buying it, so. We stood here, I know you remember, we're walking around with it, talking it for hours, you were still here, and we said, how in hell? So we came up with, we said, put the ten thousand dollars deposit down on your check, we'll guarantee it.
Okay, can you sum up?
Okay, but that's what we said. I need you to understand a couple of things, nobody else gets, everybody's happy, I was first, what's it? He, wow, he flipped it in six months, made a hundred grand, that's great. By the way, we thought that what J C wanted to do with it, which he told a lot of people, not us, but a lot of people about, was a great idea. Great idea, and he owns a house here, and it was a great idea. And you still kept the, don't interrupt me, he kept, he kept the east side.
End it, I'm not going to interrupt.
This is important for you two to understand. Okay, listen to me, they said, no, because it keeps going, listen, we didn't want the land. We were relieved on Monday, when we found out you put the check down, where they're, oh my God, in fact, some of these people didn't know till the next meeting that that happened. We never wanted to own the land, we were petrified of it, and we're saying, what the hell are people going to think? We haven't fixed this and fixed that, we're buying this land.
I, I, I think he knows where most of it's.
Oh, no, but I want them to understand.
But they had a time limit, we have a time.
Nobody tells to get you.
What about Russ, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's back to film, you know, there is no reality, there's only perception, okay, well, that's what's going on here.
Yeah.
Um, a while back, I had given you stuff that was on Nextdoor and all that other stuff, a, a lot of stuff has been taken by these guys as personal affronts.
Yeah.
And that's the big problem, it's not, it's just the way things proceeded, and the stuff that's on Nextdoor and all that crap, which I don't think any of us should ever be on, but that's my opinion, I don't think you should be putting anything on there related to what goes on in this district. But, the result of what's going on here, I think is very important, because we had a system where we didn't have any rules in place for vacant properties, for these transfers, everything is going to be cleared up with the SPIB amount. So that's one positive thing that's going to come out of that mess. I'll be honest with you, I wanted that property for the community, and at, at the time, I think we were under the perception that we were going to sell that property and pay for that property, and everything would wash out in like a year, we figured, which is, was dreaming, okay? Because now after we're dealing with this property, we're finding out that's, that that's not happening. But, um, you know, in the long run, everything's going to be better, but I just think, you know, emails, things get misperceived. And I, I know Cal thinks I'm giving him a hard time with this stuff, you know, and it's, it's not that, it's just that I want things right, okay? There's, things have value, and I can't explain it, but when we get this filed, we get, we got the O N Ms now, right? That's, we got that cleared up, it's going to be solid, we got the E, E R Us on, all the properties that are already here, we got that all cleared up, it's all going to be in the rules, so hopefully we won't have these things going on, I think.
I think part of what happened, nobody truly understood the time it would take.
It was too quick, it, it, yeah, wait, all this was, it was, it was real quick.
Waiting for it to happen, plus us making it happen, there's a time element there.
You know, I mean, Ray was pretty strong in his losing that thirty, forty thousand dollars a year that the district was.